Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Here. I declare a quorum. Next, I need an approval for the minutes of Planning, Enzoning and Building Committee, regular meeting, December 10th, 2015.
It's a move.
Second.
Any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is report and recommendation, facade improvement grant at Crossroads Tavern and Edery at 396 West Irving Park Road. Right, oh, Mrs. Chrissy.
Good evening. So, tonight, the request before you is for a facade improvement grant at 396 West Irving Park Road, Crossroads Tavern at Edery. The location is highlighted here in blue. Just for reference, the building here is highlighted in green within the open air porch and the deck in the darker blue. In terms of the request for funding and the improvements that are being requested for reimbursement, the facade materials have been changed to enclose the lower wall of the porch area, the open air porch, also the material on the top gable. The curtains that are used along the openings to allow it to be more of an enclosed area, that is also being sought for reimbursement, and then painting overall. And so, the bottom photo shows the work that has been completed to date with those facade improvements. The next improvements that are being requested for reimbursement are the site improvements. There was previously a large sign that was located around the open air porch. It has since been replaced with a new compliant monument sign, and that has been moved across the drive aisle on the other side of the property. Other improvements that are included in this request are the removal and replacement of the parking lot, and then, and that has been completed as well. The three-sided dumpster enclosure is planned to be completed in the spring, which will look like the photos on the screen, a fully enclosed, or, excuse me, a three-sided enclosure with wood. And then, finally, the landscaping. The proposal is to improve or clean up and add some additional landscaping in the front to build a planter box in the area where the sign used to go, and then also to build a planter box and install landscaping around the new monument sign. Here is a photograph of the installed monument sign, and it also shows some of the removal and replacement of the asphalt, but here is the back parking lot and what that looks like after that improvement. This request was reviewed by the Streetscape and Economic Enhancement Committee, and this is the laundry list of the funding request. However, the committee determined that the removal and replacement of the parking lot was not an eligible expense. So, what I've done is I've actually recalculated the total site improvements and then identified the eligible total facade site improvements, of which the Streetscape Committee recommended 50 percent reimbursement, which results in the request before you tonight of $32,735.13.
So, all the procedures. All the procedures of the facade improvement grant program have been met.
That is correct.
So, I want to make a motion.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? Alderman Roy Wesley.
All the contractors have been paid on this, and all liens have been, I don't want them to come back to us and say, "I've never been paid for that job. I don't know what your procedure."
Right. So, procedurally, in order to approve the grant agreement, we will not have verified that the contractors have been paid, but prior to payout, we will receive confirmation that those contractors have been paid prior to us dispersing the funds to the applicant.
So, you'll get something that, oh, that's been paid for?
Correct.
Okay.
Go ahead, Alderman.
I have no problem going forward. I don't have a question on this, but I have a question on the facade program. Maybe I'm missing.
Next, Jim. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Any more questions?
No, I'll wait for my last one.
Alderman Messina.
Yeah, I know it was up in the air at one point, but did we, in fact, decide that repaving the parking lots would not be included, then?
Correct. So, it was determined by the committee that the repair, removal and replacement of a parking lot is actually a maintenance item that is not subject to an eligible expense for the facade grant program.
Great. Thanks.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene.
Next is the facade improvement program policy and score and criteria.
So, as we start talking about the program policy and the requirements of applicants to come in and receive funding for this program, there were a few items that the committee discussed, and in terms of goals, the committee wanted it to be an opportunistic tone. From the outset of the original proposal, it was more of a, hey, we're looking to reduce blight and, you know, prevent some dilapidated properties. So, this just simply turns around the tone and says, "Thank you for investing. We want to be able to help reinvest in the community," which was one of the goals. The other goals were to make it a transparent process and then clarify expectations and the opportunities for funding in the policy. Some of the key clarifications that we did make were that we identified eligible properties in terms of not allowing non-conforming properties to be eligible, and the reason behind that was to ensure that those properties that are non-conforming are not necessarily penalized, but we're not allowing that non-conforming use to be perpetuated by further investing in that. So, that was one of the clarifications. We also provided some additional examples and clarifications for the eligible and ineligible expenses. We have a somewhat detailed list now where the policy was summarized, I guess you could say, previously, but in talking with a few applicants, we decided that there was a need to actually provide some examples of what those eligible expenses would look like. Procedural requirements were also clarified in terms of, we now are going to be requiring a pre-application meeting, and again, this will set very clear expectations for what are eligible and ineligible expenses, what are the procedural requirements that they will have to, you know, what documentation they'll have to submit for the process, talk about timeline, and that way, the applicant and staff are on the same page and starting that dialogue early in the process as opposed to having to try and go through that later on after they've already gotten drawings or things like that. And then, we're also providing that checklist of items for what they will need to submit with their application. Did we want to talk about the policy or go right into scoring?
You can go right into scoring.
Okay. So, then, the other aspect of this is to increase transparency and expectations. The committee looked at.
Hold on. Go ahead.
We're not going to talk about the policy. We're just going to go.
You've got any questions? Go ahead.
Go ahead. I'll just say we're off for the end, then.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, in terms of scoring, the committee determined that we wanted to tie the scoring mechanism or the ways that it would, the projects would be evaluated back to the program goals and priorities. And so, they looked at improved curb appeal of the property, which would include perhaps replacement of or change in the facade material, replacement of windows or doors, landscaping, signage, exterior lighting and painting, for example. The improved pedestrian experience would include architectural details to the facade, adding an awning or canopy, exterior lighting, sidewalk or ADA improvements, significant visual improvements, or the magnitude of visual improvements, I should say, would be things that would be, so if it was a significant visual improvement of adding a prominent entry feature, for example, that could be weighted higher. Adding new windows or doors on a facade that didn't have any, changing the massing or scale to complement the existing context of the neighborhood would also improve the score for this category. In terms of level of private investment, we looked at a couple criteria where we wanted to make sure that the applicant were, was providing more of their private investment than what was required to just minimally meet the grant. So, we scored a high, we provided a higher score for those that were willing to invest more into their property. And then, property or projects that provided both the facade and site improvements, then were also able to be scored higher. Location was also considered, and then, finally, the use of the property. So, I have provided the scoring criteria that's being proposed. If we have any questions, we can reference sort of on the large screen.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Let's talk about location. What do you mean by location?
So, in terms of location, those that are located in the Town Center Business District are scored higher, meaning that those have a higher priority for.
So, define Town Center Bus.
It's based on the zoning classification. So, any of the properties that are located in Town Center Business District would be.
I think this council voted at one time that from all the way from the city line all the way to other city line. So, are we not, zoning might change in that, does it? Does it or does it not?
Yeah, I think what Alderman Roy Wesley is referring to is way back when, we had decided that the facade program would be available for any business along the Irving and Wooddale corridor, and what Kelly's talking about is any business would be eligible, but there would be a higher ranking for those within a certain area on Wooddale Irving. I think that's what, just getting at.
Well, that's not fair. And the reason is because, say, I'm two businesses out of that area. So, what kind of scoring are you going to give that business, two businesses over from mine?
So, that would largely be dependent upon the project that's being proposed. This is just one component, so there's a total of, I don't even remember, but there's a number of criteria, and so, this would just be one of the factors.
So, in this case, we just, we just approved Crossroads, the downtown area, the town center area would be around Irving Park and Wooddale Road. So, they would get a lower score at that time.
Correct. The one thing that I suppose I neglected to mention, and I apologize, is that the, there are points awarded for each of these scoring criteria, and then, that would translate to a percentage of funding that would be recommended.
And who's determined these points? Who's putting these points in?
The committee ultimately. So, staff provides a recommendation in the staff report that goes to the committee.
I really don't think you're being fair to other businesses in Wooddale on doing this on a point scale like this. The reason is because Crossroads pays the same amount of taxes percentage-wise as a person in, on Wooddale Road and Irving. So, you're penalizing a business that lives outside that district, and we talked about doing this whole Irving Park corridor. It's not fair to the other businesses. And we're, we're a city as one, not just one little town. So, that's fair for all the businesses on Irving Park, not just a little section and score higher because you just have a business on Wooddale Road and Irving.
Go ahead.
I believe that the thought in this was that the focus would be on the Town Center Business area. However, the other properties are still eligible for funding.
Again, you're using a point scale. That's not fair for other businesses.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
So, when this came to light, that we want this facade program, it's supposed to be borderline, borderline grant, to do a point scale exactly what we're doing here. So, if my, we'll throw Target Jewel and decide to do a brand-new facade program, they are going to be downgraded on a point scale because they are not in the downtown area. I agree with, with that point. If we're going to do a facade program here, you need to do borderline to borderline regardless. I don't care. The point scale has got to go out, and the committee will be Streetscape that makes the determination on, is that what we're saying, and the Building Department?
Go ahead.
So, there's a couple steps here, but just to point out the fact that there's five points in between that range, between the range in terms of the percentage that's assigned here. So, the location isn't necessarily going to be the breaking factor between. It could be, but it's not necessarily going to be because the project, the scope of the project is really what drives the scoring mechanism. However, staff will be assigning a score based on the project's scope and these other factors, and then, it will go to Streetscape Committee, which will evaluate these criteria as well, and they will then come to an agreement or consensus on what score they want to assign it, and then come to PZB and ultimately, City Council to then approve whatever funding number that is.
Go ahead. One more.
Wait, I can clear this up. I think I, there's a little mess.
Go ahead.
All right. We're focusing on location. We have six different criterias here. Location is only one of the six, right? I believe there's six. Correct? Am I, am I correct?
Correct.
So, the, the location is either three, two, or a one. So, you're talking about one-point difference. The project, you know, look, we have mixed-use with first-floor retail, that's four points, retail, four points, restaurant and entertainment, three points, lodging, three points, office only gets two, and automotive service gets one. And, and so, basically, you're taking all six categories and getting a total, but it's not based on one specific thing, and, you know, basically, you're exiled, or you're in the middle, okay, you're good. Because, let's face it, if the guy on the outside is doing a major renovation, he's going to score higher than the guy that's right at Wooddale and Irving Park. And that's, I think that's some of the confusion we're just looking at. I don't know, maybe I'm misunderstanding you.
Alderman Ray Messina.
No, I, I think you guys, you have valid point. I'm more concerned down the road. So, as we build this out, most of these businesses in the business core, right, are going to grow and going to grow, where there's only a few on that fringe, and that becomes not fair. What I'd like to see is, can they appeal? So, if I'm a business and I fall just short of that next tier of funding, can I appeal based on my score for location? Is there, is that built in? Is there an appeal?
I think just, we'll get to that in just one second. Just jumping back quickly, I think it's important to note, Crossroads, the recommendation that came out is for 50 percent. It's actually in C1, it's not in TCB. So, I know we're talking about the criteria, and we're talking about a scoring point ratio. And I think the key is that, you know, staff will review it, and we have our recommendation, but that's where the checks and balances come in with Streetscape and also with you guys. So, what we do is, you know, like we would review any project, make a recommendation, and this is a way to, you know, put some thinking behind that, whereas, you know, what we don't want to do is it to be completely subjective, because we've got to have some criteria for it, and that, that's the whole purpose of it, so people, when they make, when they make an application, they know what the criteria is, that's shared with them, they know what staff is looking for, they know what Streetscape Committee is looking for, so that they know, okay, this, you know, if you provide, if you're just resurfacing the parking lot, that's not an eligible project. However, if you do add lighting to the parking lot, if you add landscaping to the parking lot, if you improve your dumpster enclosure, those are, those are elements that are scored and do move you up. So, there's ways to look at it and say, okay, well, to echo your point, maybe I dropped from a three to two because I'm not in this location. However, I'm planning to beef up the landscaping, so that moves me from a two to three in another area. So, the thinking behind it was, let's make it transparent. When people come in, let's provide them the information so they know how it's being reviewed, and that's where we get the checks and balances from, going from staff initially to Streetscape and then PZB with you guys.
Alderman Woods.
Yeah, just to add on to what Ed just said, that the thought process or the concept is that that applicant would know ahead of time, prior to spending money, where he stood on the grading system. That's the, the point of meeting with staff and going over, and how do we move these pieces around to achieve their objective and our objective? So, and one point, I understand absolutely what Alderman Wesley is saying, but it's, it's really not meant to be, or have a negative impact. I mean, theoretically, it's, it's one, one point out of, out of what are the total points that you're going to have?
Twenty points.
Twenty, twenty points, so. But, but again, with the conversation up front, that's, that's where the work's done. The homework's really done there, and the project's developed. If it doesn't make sense for the property owner, then he's not going to move forward. But hopefully, the city is working with them to maximize the dollars for both the city and the, the property owner or applicant.
Alderman, Alderman Roy Wesley.
Again, we're not being fair to all the businesses. I don't care if it's one point, I don't care if it's a quarter point, I don't care what it is. Ed, what you just said, put more lighting in a street or landscaping in that would improve your points. So, you're saying, okay, I'm out of the district, I got to put more money into street, parking lights or landscaping to get, make sure I could get that extra point versus a person that's living, that has a business in the, in the TCB area, wouldn't have to do that because they're probably already going to get that point. I can't express more.
Mr. Cage.
Could I finish?
Go ahead.
Can't express more that all businesses are created equal, and on this, we're not doing that. I like to take that part out and just put all of Irving Park on there.
Mr. Cage.
I think you raise, raise some excellent points. I think this is something, you know, just hearing the feedback this evening, we'll go back and take a look at. I did want to kind of go back to Alderman Messina's point, because I didn't answer the question about the appeals. I think, actually, I don't think, I know, what staff is trying to do is to make this process clearer, get people the information that they need upfront. Some of the applications that were made before, maybe that information wasn't translated as clearly as it should have been. The direction that we're going is in and that we're in, that we're going further in that direction is, we're giving you more information upfront. We want you to improve your property, we want you to improve the city, and this is a, this is an excellent program that shows that the city is committed to its businesses. I think you make an excellent point, and that's something that we will, we'll take a look at. But I think, I don't get the sense that the people, because what we're trying to do is establish a relationship, and what I've seen so far with the, with the applications and the businesses who've come in, that's what they're looking for as well. They like the fact that the city's amenable to discussing improvements to their property and taking the time, and I think it's, you know, I, I think I would be a little disappointed if, if that relationship broke down, that somebody would appeal it, but that's something we can look into.
Alderman Jacob.
A couple questions. On the point criteria, I, I have to admit, I, everybody brings up some valid points. I'm kind of on the fence about this, but some of the criteria here, like visual impact, excellent, good, fair, improved curb appeal. Well, I might think it's excellent. You guys might think it's fair. I mean, that, to me, is very subjective. So, something like, I mean, some of those, I don't agree with scoring it like that. And my second question was, were we redlined everything? On number two, where it talks about applicants, I know there's a thing here that says they have to maintain it for three years. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. But it does talk about letting people that lease their properties. So, what if their lease is up in two years and it's a three-year, so, and now the owners, you know, you have a, whatever, pizza place in there, then what happens? And nobody's going to rent it because they don't want to put a pizza place in there?
Well, the, the use does not have to be consistent. It has to be, and in order for a tenant to be an applicant for the facade improvement program, they need the property owner approval, because ultimately, the property owner has to agree to continue to maintain those improvements for the period of three years. So, it can be sort of a co-application, but the property owner will always be required to maintain those improvements.
Okay. So, the property, I mean, it's not the person renting, I mean, it's the property owner that has to make that final call, that he or she wants to do it.
Correct. And the tenant, they can pay for it if they so choose, but again, the property owner, it's their property, so these improvements must be approved by the property owner.
Okay. Thank you.
Couple of things. Number one, going back to Alderman Messina and the appeal, honestly, once you bring it before this committee, it's already at the appeal. So, if somebody appeared disagreed, you would say, no, I don't think that score is, you know, 50 percent, I think it's more like 37 and a half percent. That's, that is the council's, you know, choice. So, you have that in place, but, and I've had some discussions with actually the chairman and Mr. Cage and Ms. Chrissy over there regarding the criteria. You have to start somewhere, okay? We have to have something, because I think I made this, said this a while ago when we first started this, over a year ago, but we can't make every project 50 percent. Like, if I remember, I, I brought up the numbers in Addison where they, they've been doing this for a while. Basically, their average is about 25 percent. I believe they, it was over $500,000 that they put out, they received over $2 million worth of renovations back. This was a way to help the businesses, you know, fix up their places. This is a partnership. I, you know, I brought up a couple suggestions, but it could become even more complicated. I said, well, is painting really, you know, painting alone would not score and would not receive any money, but painting with windows and something else or lighting, it might bring you enough, enough points to get some, something. I said, so, okay, so if you score 50 percent, should painting be part of 50, should you get 50 percent for painting your building? Because by itself, it wouldn't, you know. I asked if we can do like 20 percent on painting and, you know, maybe 30 percent on landscaping or something. So, not everybody's getting 50 percent. Let's face it, we only have so much money, and we're trying to help as many businesses as we can, but like I said to Ms. Chrissy this evening, I, we don't want to overcomplicate this thing. We want to work with the businesses, and we want to see an improvement in the community. So, I mean, again, everything could be subjective. We just don't want this to become an automatic stamp, okay, they're doing a project 50 percent. That's why we need the criteria.
Mr. Lewis.
Yeah, just real quick. I mean, I'd, I'd like to say, I mean, this is exciting. Obviously, it's a good program. We've been successful with the program so far. We've had one, one business complete it. We've got another business approved tonight. We have it budgeted for, you know, we're really just fine-tuning it, and I guess that's the spirit of the committee meeting, to fine-tune it. I think the Streetscape Committee did an excellent job, fine-tuning it, taking us to the next step, like the mayor said, getting it more organized. I think we need to pass this, obviously, but I could see that there's some debate on one of the components of the scoring. I think it's, it's non-debatable that we need a scoring mechanism for transparency alone, but I see only really one debate with the location as a criteria. I think we should pass this and, you know, have a motion on whether or not to include the location as a criteria, because the rest of it seems that everybody likes, or it could be tweaked and fine-tuned as we move down. It seems like the, the real item of controversy is the location, and if we can settle that tonight, no need to, to go back, get the ball rolling with the rest of it. Whether or not we include the location, let's decide tonight, and then down the road, we can fix the rest of it as we go on. It's my opinion.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Look, I'm going to get off this subject, but part of this policy, when facade program comes in, someone comes in and want to do a facade program, they program comes in, someone comes in and wanna do a facade program, they, they bring in their plans, they showed us what they want to improve their property. Am I correct?
Well, technically, they need to come in before they have any plans so that they don't go down the road and spend money on a project that wouldn't be eligible for funding under this program, which is why we want the pre-application meeting when they're starting to think about it.
Okay, so then before the committee, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, before the committee approves the funding, they have to submit the plans for city's approval, right?
Correct. They conceptual plans enough where they can get some estimates for, to understand what the cost might be.
Well, because I understand that's, that's the way we did the Front Street project. We funded so much money to get that off and they submitted plans and all that, and then we approved the plans. So, going forward, is that how it's gonna work that someone comes forward and you have the meeting and they wanna move forward? And are we gonna see plans of what they wanna do with these buildings before you make the final decision? Are we gonna fund this or streetscape committee? Because that ain't the way the facade program went on Front Street. Somehow this got-
Correct. So, it's my understanding that Front Street was sort of the, the pilot project. And so, that process was handled a bit differently than how this program is structured. So, this program is structured where the, whoever potential applicant comes in, meets with staff, we talk about this program policy, we talk about eligible expenses, the timeline, the process, all of that. And then they go back and they decide what improvements they wanna make. They draw up the plans, conceptual plans to, to be able to get some estimates. They bring in some estimates with their application and they say, this is what we're looking at doing. They, at any time, can come in and meet with us, and we often do, meet with applicants in the middle of the process to give them direction on, on what they're proposing. Once that's, once we have a completed application, then we'll package that up in a staff report as you saw in your, in your packets. And that will then go to streetscape with a recommendation from staff based on whatever scoring mechanism that we decide on. And then streetscape committee will do their scoring of it and then it will come to PZB for discussion with the two recommendations, staff recommendation and then committee recommendation. But the plans will, will be included as part of the staff memo, but they will not be a separate item to be voted on. It will be packaged up like you saw for Crossroads.
So, let me go back here. So, more or less, okay, so more or less, the building department, streetscape's gonna give a final blessing of a plan with a recommendation for this council without seeing the plan. That's what I'm getting the impression here.
No, no.
Because we'll see it to vote on, do we give them the money? But what if we wanna see a different change in that plan?
Mayor?
Number one, part of the process, so, the business wants to come in, they approach the building department. They tell them, they meet, they tell them what they need to be done. They have to do their due diligence. So, if the business drags their feet and takes six months, well, it's their fault. Otherwise, they get their stuff together. Within three weeks, they give them some information, goes to the streetscape staff, they make a recommendation, it comes here. Now, if the committee feels different, they're gonna say, well, I'm looking at this and I'm scoring it and I'm really thinking it's less. Well, that's a discussion for the committee here. But you're trying to, basically, trying to streamline this, basically. You wanna work with the businesses. I asked, how long's it take? Well, if they come, if they meet with us, they have basically 30 days, we get it on the streetscape. After that, it would come to the committee, council. Within 60 days, if, if they're doing their work, it's done deal. Trying to, again, working with the businesses, trying to help them out, partnering. But the decisions, I mean, again, everything can be subjective. I mean, you like, you like a metal fence, he likes a wood fence. How do you score it? You might, you completely hate wood because you hate painting. So, as far as you're concerned, it's a zero. Of course, it can be subjective, but the key is, is the business doing something of benefit to the community.
And, and I totally understand it, Mayor, but, I'm sorry. I totally understand it, Mayor, but I just want to know that we are taking taxpayers' dollars and we wanna be able as a council, as a member, to look at these plans when they submit them and give our input before you give the final checkmark. We recommend, we recommend. But that could be changed and then will they go back to the drawing board with them? I'm not hearing that they'll go back to the drawing board. They're going with the recommendation of what, what they're gonna submit to us. I just wanna make sure it's fair that, you know, there's other businesses. And then the other thing, if one, one starts in a process and all of a sudden, they get so far and they don't have, but we get another one that comes forward, everything, package deal, here's architect theme, and this business ain't done on certain, is there a deadline that they have to, once they start the process? Is there a deadline? Or are we gonna have like three of them all at once? And how do we work that one?
Mr. Cage?
We, to kind of get into the subjectivity portion of it, when I started with the city, it was very subjective. And applicants came in and to quote a number of them, you know, the question was asked of me, what do you want to see? And, and let's be quite frank, it's not about what I personally want to see. That's the reason the policy has been revised. That's the reason we've got a scoring chart in here. It's not about what one person wants to see. So, the whole point of, you know, and I, and I know some of these things are subjective. We would like to get, it's, it's uncomfortable when someone comes in with us, with some ideas and plans and they wanna get your feedback. Because it's not just staff's opinion, it's the streetscape committee, it's the PZB. There's a lot of people who weigh in on this. So, I think that's important, that we're trying to get to that point where it's a fairer system, that it's not based on just feedback from staff alone. And I think Alderman, Alderman Wesley makes an excellent point. These plans, you know, when they're submitted, the entire city council is welcome in our office at any time to come and review those. It's, you know, we wanna be transparent, we want you involved in the process. So, that, that's a courtesy that we would offer anyway with any project. So, just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Mr. Chrissy?
To also clarify, in terms of the, the process, the process for streetscape is very similar to a process for a public hearing, say, a special use. So, in terms of review, we, we try and do the vetting as, as best we can to get it to, before it gets to the public hearing. And we often have applications that come in and just because we have an application, if it's not complete, it doesn't go forward. We wait until we have a completed application. The same is true for the facade improvement program. If we have missing information where it's not enough to make a, a decision, we'll hold that back until we have a complete package. So, it, it is entirely possible that we may have one application move forward even though it's submitted after another one because of their ability to get all of the required documentation submitted. But hopefully, we'll be doing enough of the vetting before it gets to you that if there's concerns about the design, you always have the option as the council to weigh in on the design. But hopefully, we will have done that before you because we would've taken it to the committee, streetscape committee, and they would've likely done the same.
Alderman Jacob?
What Mr. Mermes had said, taking out the location criteria, I think that would might ease the mind of Mr. R. Wesley, but for me, like improved curb appeal of subject property, excellent, good, fair, poor, that's way too subjective. I mean, I may say excellent, Alderman Catalano may say poor, Alderman Messina may say good. I mean, I'd rather have something, does it improve the curb appeal? Yes or no? It gets, you know, one point for yes, zero points for no. Then have all these subjective, you know, what's to say it's excellent for, I mean, yes or, it either does or it doesn't. So, that's, that's my only problem with it is some of them are too subjective. When you ask a question, property use, I mean, retail, we know what retail is, so that's, you know, easy enough point.
Okay. We'll have one more question, Mayor, then we bring it up for a vote. I'm sorry.
Very quick.
Two more questions.
With, with the points, okay, so there's a committee voting. It's not the committee, everybody says four or three. Some may say three, some may say one. Basically, the majority wins. So, let's say everybody up here, let's say two guys like wood fence and everybody else likes, you know, metal fence, you know, wrought iron fence or something. So, six to two, who get, what score are we gonna give it? We're gonna give it the three points and the ones that wanted the wood, I'm sorry, but, you know, you, you have to have some kind of point system, otherwise, this is not gonna work and you can't do it on the fly. And, and in the future, the projects that come forward, this one is done. Unfortunately, they presented their application to different staff over a year ago and we couldn't give them a straight answer because we really didn't have a good criteria. So, basically, they did the work with the anticipation that once we establish the criteria, you know, if they qualified, they qualified. Nobody guaranteed them any money, but they went through the process and we're here tonight and that's what happened. And no other project's gonna come forward like this ever again because now we have a criteria, providing you guys pass one, otherwise then we don't have one again.
Alderman Woods?
Ed, hopefully, a little clarification. So, one, the grading system. We're not gonna sit there and look at, you know, black, white, red, green. So, it's really bigger than that with the, the concept. Did it really change the structure that was there? Does it make an improvement to the city? Did the scale and massing of it change? So, yeah, somebody could go, yeah, I like it or I don't like it. But is it a major improvement? Or did the guy just paint the building? Did he blow out the front end, throw a roof on it and nice vestibule, entryway, landscape, change all the windows? So, you might not like the configuration of the windows, but you have, you would have to admit, if you're being fair, that that was a major improvement. And it's probably, based on the scale of everything and the amount of change that happened, that it's probably a good job, you know, or a, a medium job at least. We're, we're not gonna get caught in the, the finite details of, I didn't wanna use stucco, I would've rather used brick or I would've rather the brown was darker or all that. I mean, you, otherwise, we, we're gonna start an architectural review committee and who's gonna be on that committee? You know, most communities try to stay away from that. So, we try to make it, right. And we try to make it fair and understandable to, to staff, to people up here, to staff and to the applicants that come in. So, in my opinion, I think we have a good start. I'd be willing to make a motion. We'll take off the scoring criteria for location and, and probably add another criteria in its place because I think that we need something there. But we'll stay away from location. That would be my motion.
I'll second that. One more question, Mr. Roy Wesley.
I would have all my questions out by now if we went through the first part. So, that's okay. So, we'll do it here. I don't mind that. Now, we're talking about finance. No, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about how they're gonna fund this.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So, how are you, how are you finding out if these people could afford it? Before, we ran into a problem on Front Street that, yes, 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 they got the money, they got the money, get the money. And then a sudden, half went poof, goodbye.
Go ahead.
So, in terms of the distribution of grant award, we're not actually verifying that they have the money to complete the work, but the reimbursement of that work won't be distributed until that work has been completed. So, they would've had to actually expend that money and then ensure that that, those vendors were paid prior to us dispersing any reimbursement.
So, you're halfway through a project and you're giving them money? Or you're gonna wait towards the end, like we did this one?
I'm not sure I understand. I'm sorry.
Okay. Front Street, we did payments, sections. Are we doing it the same way for other projects?
There have been, there's been no change to that portion of the policy.
Okay. So, say they're halfway through the project and they went, oh, suddenly it goes bankrupt. So, we got half the project done and we're sitting here with half of it done. What happens? That was the first question. Might as well get all my questions out, right?
Go ahead.
Answer that one. Should answer that one.
Okay.
You got an answer.
No, but she said no money will be expended until the project's done.
That's not how, that's not how Front Street was done.
Well, Front Street was done differently. Have we changed, because I, I just wanna make sure, how are we, how are we doing this? Are we still gonna make the payment or, once the project's done, that's when we expend the money?
Mr. Cage?
We've referenced Front Street, the, the project a lot and, you know, the property has improved. That project was done prior to both Ms. Chrissy and myself being here. It was done without a scoring criteria. So, what we're trying to do is make the process more transparent, more accountable. And I, I think that's, that's the key. And, you know, I, I appreciate that, you know, that was the first, I appreciate that was the first project. But how that project was done, I don't think we're in a good position to answer it just because we, we weren't here. So, moving forward, this is the criteria.
Mayor?
But so, are you saying that we don't pay any money out until the project's done? And, and the owners of the property will know how they scored and how they ranked, so they're gonna know what they receive at the end. So, we're not making payments. See, Front Street went a little different. There was payments. And I know neither one of you was here. The question with Alderman Wesley's asking is, so, we're not making payments. Basically, our payment will come at the end once the project's done. So, if, if they don't finish the project, they get no money, is basically what you're saying, correct?
No. So, the way that the policy is currently written and there was no change proposed to that portion of it, what Alderman Wesley suggested could happen, could actually happen. To avoid that, we could put in some other mechanisms to either require the project to be fully completed before we pay out, or it could be a case by case basis where perhaps we, even if we were to require and, you know, verify their funding, it, it doesn't necessarily mean that funding will remain in place over the duration of the project. So, there's really no verification that would ensure that the project would be completed. However, if we wanted to make that modification, we could simply modify that portion of the policy to just say that grant dispersments will be made in one installment upon completion, full completion of the project. And that would then eliminate any potential issues with that, but it also then eliminates the ability to have these installments where if a potential applicant wants to come in and they only have enough funding for a certain portion of it and then they complete that and ask for reimbursement so that they can do then the, the later stages of it, we won't have that ability in the policy if we were to make that change.
Go ahead.
I, I can't sit up here and vote for something on tax dollars and taking a chance of a business maybe not have enough money to finish it. And that's, and that's, that's fiscal responsibility. So, that's the first one. How we fix that is, I like your suggestion. Now, can I get my, my second question out?
Go ahead.
The scoring system. Another thing I don't like about this thing, about staff being involved with it, say, I'm a council, I'm a council member and I'm finding out about a scoring thing and your department's doing it. I'm not saying I'm gonna do it. And I see your department score high on certain things. Ed, why are you scoring that high on that? That's ridiculous. Then Alderman Peter Jacobs comes in and says, Ed, why you scored so low on that? Vice versa. Vice versa. Now, we come in into political stuff. Another thing is, the mayor, this street committee is appointed by the mayor, correct? 100%? If we're gonna do that, the mayor, what's not saying the mayor can't come in, I'm not saying he's going to do it, could come in and say, "I really think that this should be adjusted. I think we're, I think the political thing could be put into this and I don't think it's fair for staff to be put into that." Do you understand what I'm saying on that? I don't think it's fair. And I, if, if we're gonna go this way, I'd like to see a committee, not just appointed by the mayor, but by, by the full council, approval by the council then.
Mr. Woods?
Okay, all those people, first of all, are appointed by the mayor with the approval of the city council, so you did approve them. Yeah, they are. It's in the rules. So it goes through multiple layers. What would you have? There's no scoring system and you, you review? I mean, I, I don't get it. I don't understand what the alternative is. So first, it's gotta go through staff, they're gonna grade it, then it goes through three street gate, they're graded.
Then it comes here.
Then it comes here and we're grading it.
I don't like it where staff is involved with the grading thing, though.
So, what do we do? Just fire staff and we'll just go directly?
Go to the scoring system, write to street gate.
Should we do that with everything else, then? All the engineering projects, architectural projects, street projects? Why do we have staff involved in anything, then? We hire professionals to do a job.
But you're, you're, you're asking for city funds that the taxpayers are paying.
We're talking about scoring.
Exactly. And I don't, I don't think they should be in a scoring. They don't score engineering, they don't score projects.
Okay, so we, we had a motion and a second, let's take a roll call on that.
Well, what are we, what are we taking out on this?
We're taking out the location part.
Are we taking, are we doing a financing thing? Are we going to leave it the way it is with Front Street? I know there's a motion just to take out the location, but are we going to leave the financing in there?
Go ahead, Mr. Murmurs.
Yeah, the, the motion was clear by Alderman Woods to take out the location component and also now the financing has come up, so we would need an amendment if we wanna talk about the financing.
I think that needs to have a little more discussion and, and I'm okay with closing up that and tightening it up, but we're gonna be here for another two hours debating that. So, if, if, if staff can put something together knowing what the city council is looking for to just fine tune that part. The reason I'm pushing to get the other part is, we've got people that are applying. At some point, we have to start the system, right? We have a grant program going, people are applying, but we don't have any rules that we can live by, 'cause we can't agree on anything.
Go ahead, one more question.
I understand that point and I have no problem, but it threw the curve ball at me now that I'm asking you to change, change it now, pass this, but take out that no payment will be given out until the project is completed. All I'm asking is change that now.
Right, but we don't know that that's absolutely what everybody wants, wants to do. And, and there's, there's good reasons not to do it and there's good reasons to do it. Certainly, the ones that Alderman Roy Wesley brought up are very good reasons to do it. Chrissy brought up some good reasons not to do it, so I don't want it to be a knee-jerk reaction that we sit here and just yank it out. So, I'm saying nothing, no dollars are gonna be expended, they have time to think that through logically and bring something to us.
Mr. Cage? How long would it take to change the finance part and the location part and get it back to council?
Um, I think we've got some very clear direction on the, the issues that are, that are concerning people. I think certainly we'll move this up on the list of priorities, work on it relatively quickly. I don't wanna back myself into a corner in terms of the specific date I'll bring it back, but within 30 to 45 days, I think, is, is a reasonable timeframe if that's acceptable.
So let's make those adjustments, then we bring it back to council and we'll vote on it. So we'll table it at this point.
Council?
Well, committee, I'm sorry.
Wait, you still have a motion on the floor.
The motion on the floor, why can't we vote on that? That we all think agree on?
You have a motion on the floor.
If you wanna pull the payment out, let's just work on the payment. Otherwise, we're gonna have the same conversation again in 45 days and we wonder why staff can't get anything done, 'cause they keep redoing the same thing.
Okay, so they have a roll?
What's the motion? Is that okay? Okay, thank you.
The motion? Go ahead.
The motion is to remove, remove the scoring criteria for location and add a different criteria in its place.
Okay. Alderman Sorrentino?
No.
Alderman Messina?
No.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
No.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
What's the vote?
Four to three. Passes.
Okay, so, items to consider for future meetings. Plumbing code amendment, that's on January 28th. UDO tax amendment, that's January and February. Annexation of areas A through M to be determined, and last is additional weight finding signs to be determined. Any other items to consider? No? I need a motion to adjourn.
What's the motion?
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
The minute taker, Public Health and Safety has called orders. I need approval of the minutes for October 22nd, 2015. That is my motion.
Second.
Corrections, concerns? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Report of recommendation, purchase, replacement, squad cars. I would sum this up so we can move this meeting sooner. We have done this in the past, that we pre-approved squad cars due before the budget is passed because of price-wise and, and it's, I'm gonna make a motion to approve it.
For what's the amount?
I don't know, I don't have an amount. Greg, what was his amount?
Not to exceed $52,588.
Okay, that's my motion. Second. Questions? Questions? No questions? All in favor? Aye. I'm sorry, roll call. I'm sorry, roll call. Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes. B, amplifier ordinance, it's housekeeping or is this a new ordinance?
This would be a new ordinance.
Okay. You wanna take it, short, sweet?
Sure, I'll be as brief as I can. Since the implementation of the Starcom system several years ago, which was in the planning stages for many years, it's greatly improved our interoperability countywide, so, you know, can't, enough can't be said about how much it has improved public safety on that end. What county has realized is from the initial coverage standards, they wanna ensure better coverage into more secure structures and concrete buildings. The, the system passed overall as a test, but they did, there, many towns, pretty much every town in certain types of buildings has experienced some coverage issues. So part of this, county has added additional towers throughout DuPage County. They're adding four new ones, which is their resiliency project. Unfortunately, one's actually going, going in at, near Church and Irving, at the Bensonville Water Tower. So we think that'll considerably help us with our current buildings, schools, stuff like that. But as the Elgin O'Hare is progressing through and we're looking at, you know, possible large condos or hotels or wherever that, that may, may be, we're trying to get ahead of the, those projects and if companies or developers are coming in looking to build large structures in town, that part of their planning process is gonna allow us to make sure we have sufficient in-building coverage. And, and that's accomplished through what's called bidirectional antenna amplifiers. We have tested some countywide, some mobile repeaters, that if we were to have an incident in a building, that, you know, those could be in watch commander vehicles or fire command vehicles, but they found a lot of problems with those. They're not reliable, you know, you lose coverage. So, the county ETSB has actually passed a recommendation and a policy that those types of things will not be allowed on the system. So what they're looking for, and we're looking for, for these future buildings that might go into Wooddale, is an ordinance that would set up a procedure for testing in-building coverage, a set procedure, not just a, "Well, yeah, we're having coverage problems." It would be tested by an outside agency, such as, there's local companies that work with ETSB right now that could do this testing. And if it doesn't meet the coverage criteria, it would allow them a chance to put in, plan into place to come in, into compliance with that. And then, in these large structures that might go up, if there's a police or a fire call, it would cover all frequencies, we know that we're gonna be able to communicate with our people inside. So that's the nuts and bolts of it. The policy goes into a little bit more detail as defining what type of level of quality it is and all that. And the only thing I would caution is with the proposed ordinance is, I still have to sit down with the attorney to make sure it meets, you know, all of our guidelines, but I didn't wanna expend, you know, go through that whole process. This, this has been used in a couple other agencies in the county and this is the one that the ETSB recommends, it has their recommendations. So, it probably wouldn't come back next week right away, but within the next month with a final policy, a numbering system and allow us for the big, new buildings that are coming in to let them plan ahead for this.
Okay, I'll make a motion, approve, approve by, approval with, attorney's approval. By, by, that is my motion. No, there's no money involved. So, do I have a second on motion, or?
Second.
All right. Questions, concerns? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Against? No? Okay, items considered for future meeting. Revised for false alarm ordinance, February to March. Anything else? I see none? Make a motion, adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, I call the Public Works Committee to order, but the minute taker reflect that the same members are here. Roy Wesley has left the building, or at least the dais. First is approval of Public Works Committee meeting minutes of December 10th, 2015, that is my motion.
What's the motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next, report and recommendation, approval of final payment request to Copenhagen Construction for the Elizabeth Court Pond Project in an amount not to exceed $28,705.14. That is my motion.
Second.
Roll call? Or questions? Are there any questions? Nope, roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
That passes.
Next, approval of street sweeping contract with Hovin Clean Sweep in an amount not to exceed $60,000. That is my motion.
Second.
Questions? Alderman Roy Wesley?
How much was that fee last year?
Mr. York?
The pricing is the same as it was last year. Last year, we asked for $60,000 for the clean sweep contract, but the price is the exact same as amount as it was last year. $3,990 a sweep.
Any other questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
So this is a one-year contract?
Mr. York?
When we went out to bid last year, we asked for a one-year contract with two city options for years two and three. So in order for them to, so basically, we had the right of first refusal to get rid of them, because we've asked for them to come back with this document here. There is also a clause in there that said what the pricing should be. Since the CPE-Ihu is not over zero, that they have to hold the same price as they did last year. So, we have two one-year options, so in case we wanna get rid of them, we weren't tied to a three-year contract.
So then, next year, it could, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So, next year, it will probably go up for a three-year contract? If she's saying we, we can't keep going year to year, right? Or will we be able to?
Mr. York?
We have three years of guaranteed price.
Okay, I'm fine. It's all right, thank you.
Alderman Messina?
I think they did an excellent job, but can you speak a little bit about, like, the man-hours that have been saved and how we've reallocated that person that used to street sweep and what they're doing now?
Mr. York? Are you prepared to speak to that?
I'm not prepared to speak to that at this time.
Could you, could you put something together? I mean, 'cause that is information. Mr. Murmurs?
We'll throw that in a manager's report or a monthly report.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
That passes. Next, approval of design contract with Christopher B. Burke Engineering for the Edgebrook Lift Station in amount not to exceed $92,720. That is my motion.
Second.
Questions? Alderman Roy Wesley?
Man, how did you come up with this engineer to do this project?
Mr. York?
What are you done with your, what are you done with your questions, sir?
How did you, how did you come up with them to do this project?
Mr. York?
This was an RFP. We had four RFPs returned. The RFP people were Christopher Burke, Robinson, HR Green, no, excuse me, Baxter and Woodman and RJM, thank you. And conference, we had a caucus committee of Alderman Woods, the mayor police, and Alderman Catalano, myself, Mr. Cage and Ms. Udani. All met, discussed kind of the pros and cons of each of the groups and ultimately came through with a recommendation of Burke. They have done a lift station for us in the past. I talked to Mr. Kittleson about that, that project. He said it ran pretty smooth. He didn't have any complaints with them as a, as an organization. So, the, the six of us all came to agreement that Burke should be awarded the contract and hence it's here for you tonight.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
That passes. Next items to be considered at future meetings, HSI blower relocation, January, street light policy, January 28th, Lincoln Court Street Light, January 28th, and recycling options, January 28th. Is there anything else somebody would like to add or put on? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
The only thing I would ask is that maybe you could put in a letter on what's still outstanding on a treatment plan for the punch list, or is it finally completion and are we gonna have a ribbon cutting of that treatment plan if we're done or not?
Mr. Murmurs?
Yeah, good timing, Alderman Wesley. Actually, at the next committee meeting, we didn't list it on here, but we'll have a partial, no, a final payment along with the final change order and then also we'll have an exec session to talk about some other things. And then the ribbon cutting, we're working with HR Green, obviously, we don't wanna do it out there in the frozen tundra. We're planning in the spring, time to do a nice event out there. So, it'll be coming, part of it will be coming to committee at the next committee and then the final discussion at exec session, the first council meeting in February.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? We're all good? Make a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Or adjourned?
Calling the Finance Administration Committee meeting to order. Let the minute taker note.
Let the minute taker note. Well, actually, we have a couple people leaving. Arden Roy, Alderman R. Wesley, and Alderman Woods have stepped out. And Alderman R. Wesley just returned. And Alderman Woods has just returned. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the Finance Administration Committee for the meeting for November 12th, 2015. That's my motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Next, we have our capital improvement plan. We're going to let Brad go with us. And today, we're going to go, what I'd like to do is have Brad go through it, and once we get to the projects, go page by page if anyone has questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we've done the past, I think it's now six years, we've come forward to you in mid-January with the five-year capital improvement plan. Admittedly, the first year, you know, that there was a call for projects, not a lot of projects, you know, every year was in the black going forward. It's pretty nice. Since then, you know, projects have been coming at an increasing pace every year, more projects, more spending. When we get to the next page, you can see the, the impact of that. But this is the, the high-level page, the summary page. So as you can see, in the first year, all projects included transportation, which, a little self-explanatory, but that's your roadways, sidewalks, alleys. Stormwater projects are included in there because there's largely a roadway component to those as well. Non-transportation, last year, the old buildings and grounds and miscellaneous categories were combined into non-transportation. That's where your buildings and grounds, your maintenance, IT, other, as I said, non-driveable, non-walkable items will wind up. And then water and sewer, which is pretty straightforward. So this first year, between the two, you know, you're looking a little north of $9 million. Over the five-year, what we have programmed in here currently is just under $37 million. And that does not include the almost $24 million in unfunded projects, AKA wish list projects in the back. So really, included in this 60-page document is over $60 million worth of projects. So if we go to the next page, which is the pro forma cash flows, I remember I said the first couple of years, it was black all the way out. You can see currently, based on the pro forma cash flows, the first year is marginally in the black, and then every year after that is in the red. Obviously, we only look to approve the first year, so fiscal '17, but we need to be mindful of the future years because there's projects in here specifically in the street program, stormwater program, where there's an engineering component, which is the engineering costs for the next year's project into '18, correct? So a lot of the engineering costs in fiscal '17 are for fiscal '18 projects. And that was a change a couple of years ago, where the council wanted us to kind of get ahead on bids, to bid them out in, you know, in the fall, winter, so that we were ready to go in April and May. So that's kind of the flow of the engineering costs in a lot of cases. So that's the...
Brad, just want to make one point here for the residents. As Brad said, I mean, this changes, that's why we were just, you know, going to be approving 2017. But to give you an example, last year, the 2016 to 2020, then to 2020, we should have been at a positive of $3,194, and now we're in the negative by $1,100,000. So I want residents to understand this is a, this changes, prices go up, prices go down. These are based on estimates.
Alderman E. Wesley.
So Brad, we look at, let me make sure when we go through this, we're looking at 2017 and '18 tonight, right? Because he said the engineering of project for 2018 will be end of 2017, right?
Brad?
Yeah, so, yes and no. The fiscal '17 numbers are what's going to be put into the budget that you're getting in about a month. My commentary was that the engineering numbers are to start the engineering for the projects next year.
For 2018.
Correct. So it's more of a heads up, and obviously, those bids come back to the, to the appropriate committee for approval. So for that time, you know, the project, you know, you don't want to do the project or things like that. So just something to be mindful of, you know, when we're approving it. So in that $6 million, there's some, you know, you know, amount of money that's for engineering for next year's project. Just something to be mindful of as, as we're going through the, through the document.
Mayor, did you have something?
Brad, second.
Okay. Thank you.
So that's the general side, the water and sewer capital side. This side's a little bit more flush with cash. You know, you see the first year's nominally in the black, the second year's a little better. The out-years are more significantly in the red. However, there are really two projects that drive those red numbers in those out-years. So if, you know, absent those two projects, I believe the water and sewer fund would be black the entire way out.
Alderman R. Wesley has a question.
You know, my question's going to be is why? And how could we prevent that from happening?
Mr. Wilson?
Well, are you talking on both halves of it or just on the water?
Well, we're going to...
Yeah.
Both halves.
Okay. And we can get into that. I mean, just the water and sewer, when we get there, it'll be pretty obvious what, what those drivers are. The general side, like I said, I mean, the projects have been coming at an increasing rate. In the past, we would do a resurfacing program, you know, some building maintenance programs, and a couple other projects. Now, this year, we have, you know, resurfacing, major road reconstruction, major flood, and major stormwater program. Next year, resurfacing, stormwater, road reconstruction. So as these major projects start to stack on each other, that's where those costs are going up.
Mayor Police? Go ahead. Alderman R. Wesley.
There's not water and sewer, though.
Well, you said both. That's why he went back.
I meant the water and sewer only.
Oh, okay.
Basically, trying to get about the water rates. That's what I'm trying to ask for.
And we get, like I said, to the water and sewer, there's, there's two projects that, that drive those numbers. And I have a funny feeling there'll be some consensus to either push those off or change them some. So by the end of the night, I'm pretty sure that, that those numbers will change for the water and sewer.
Mayor, did you have something?
Right. Yeah. Basically, just so everybody understands, in case you didn't notice, this CIP from last year, year CIP, there are prices that are higher for certain projects that have been in the books, and that's because staff has readjusted all the pricing because we have been getting pricing over budget due to increases in cost of concrete and steel. So some of these numbers have also gone up just because of construction costs. And as we get through the pages, then I'm sure we'll be able to fix the book.
And that's why I want to make, you know, let the residents know that this is a changing document.
So unless there's any other general questions on the pro forma, we'll move on to the transportation section. The first page is just the high-level recap of the categories within the transportation section and what those costs are in each of the years. The following page is a listing, a summary listing of each project with a page number. So if you're looking for a specific project, you can see where it's at within the book.
From here, like I said, I want to just do page by page and see if anybody has any questions.
Sure.
And then get a consensus if there's any issues.
Sure. So the first project after the summary page is the Ward Two Street Reconstruction. We're currently, we're currently in phase two of four, and I believe, is the engineering out for phase three?
Yes.
Yes. And the, yeah. So the engineering is out for phase three of that, and there's estimated cost for the project next year. And as you can see, we have the $90,000 in potential engineering costs for the fourth year of that, of that project. And when this was presented, it, you know, was a four or five-year project. We've been able to get it into the four years. So I guess I think the, after, this year, the east side of the creek will be done, and then the west side of the creek will be done the next two years.
Okay. With no questions, let's move on.
So the next sheet is the citywide stormwater master plan. This was a couple of years ago. The city undertook a stormwater master plan. At the time, had ranked it worst to first. Last year, we began the study of area one, two, and one, four, which I'm sure, as you all recall, is over in Ward Three along Prospect. And at that time, going through that process, Robinson came in and wanted to look at some other items, you know, such as that head wall, the ComEd detention possibly. So the Miller area, which is where that detention would be, was moved up into fiscal '18 since Robinson was kind of already looking at that area. So the monies for construction this year are for the area along Prospect, and next year are for kind of Miller, that head wall and that area.
One question I have is what happened to area eight, the Aspen and Ethel? Did that totally just, I know we had postponed that, but is that, how far are we pushing that out?
Yeah. To be honest with you, we didn't really get a lot of clear guidance on that one. I know it was canceled. They said, I believe there wasn't a lot of impact on that one for the $1 million. So we can add that back into the unprogrammed down at the bottom for a future time unless there's some, some direction or push to pull it back in sooner.
I would like to do that. I mean, we just, it just disappeared, so we should put it in there as unprogrammed then, unfunded. And then Alderman E. Wesley has a question.
The citywide stormwater master plan, it's going to be $50,000 to design it for this year? Am I, am I seeing that right here?
Yeah, that was approximately cost of what Robinson had done or was going to do for the initial stormwater program over in Ward Three.
Okay. So maybe I'm, maybe this ain't the right project, maybe I'm right here. The 50,000, was that county engineering, head wall, and everything else that we talked about?
So the...
Because I thought we talked about going out to look at that quicker than expected.
Sure. So there's a small component of that 50,000 that would be that, but the majority of that 70,000 that's in this year would be that project. I believe the cost in that was around 80 or 88. So we did pull a little bit of that into this year because they did start working on it. But then that 70,000 is the remainder of that particular engineering agreement.
But then, where will the engineering come from if we get the green light for the drainage situation? Should we put more up there because we're looking at the, the ComEd underneath for storage? Because this is part of that project, right?
Correct.
So to delay this project, if, I think the engineering is going to be a little more once we get the ComEd's approval, I just think it's not enough money that we're going to come back here, and we're going to come back here and we're going to ask for another 8,000. I don't want to delay that major project. I, again, I don't want an engineer to come in and say, hey, it's going to cost $120,000. Now, let's engineer it, and we get back to the drawing board, now we scrambling to get money. In this situation, for, since that is such a big project, between negotiation with ComEd, the head wall and engineering, I think we're going to be shortfall in engineering. That's only my opinion. I'm not an engineer. I don't want anyone to think I'm an engineer, but I think it's too long. I just think it's too long. That's my opinion.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, just checked with Mr. York, and that proposal did include negotiations with ComEd and design work for that ComEd area.
Mr. Mayor has... We had two separate contracts, and it's already in there. That's why, that's why the second contract came forward, because the first one was only going to address the situation partially. And that's why the second contract was with ComEd and all those discussions, and to do a bigger project and actually take care of the entire problem instead of just a...
So the 50...
Band-aid.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So the 50,000 is going engineer both projects?
No.
No. Am I reading it wrong?
Yes.
Seventy next year?
It's 120.
But he said we're going to look at 2016?
Yeah, but we have to look forward.
Mr. Wilson, could you help clarify this for Mr. Wesley here?
Yeah, so the, the money in the fiscal '16, that first column, was the contract that they worked on to start the Ward Three Stormwater Program.
Okay.
They then came in, you know, gave the presentation, came back with the additional contract for the head wall work, the ComEd work. A little bit of that was pulled into this year since they've already began. The 70,000 is the remainder of that money to do that engineering.
So we made sure we're looking at 16 and 17 now. That's why I'm being...
Well, 16, 16 is the one we're in now.
No. So we're going to look at 17. Okay. I'm good. I just think it's short.
Let's continue on, I think. Well, help, Mr. Mayor has a question here.
I just have a comment, because, you know, as you stated, Brad, we are in the, in the red in those future years, and if we're going to try and work that stuff out, I mean, something could be possibly, I mean, we're doing a major flood project here, could be close to $2 million by the time we're all said and done. So the one that's further out may have to be slightly pushed back. That's, that's a million dollars. I mean, that would help some of the red for future. I mean, if we're going to turn this to black, there may be a spot. I mean, some may think, since we have nine months of cash in the bank, they want to take a million dollars out of the general fund. That would also make a million dollars if they want to keep all the projects, but just something to consider, is all I'm saying.
Well, I think we have consensus here to move on, since we're just approving for 2017 now anyhow. Thank you.
So the next section, page 14 of the hard copy, is the street resurfacing and sidewalk replacement program. If we actually go to page 15 real quick. So as you all know, we had Hancock do the street sufficiency study earlier this summer and came back with their recommendations and scoring sheet, whatnot. So what we did, fiscal '17 was somewhat already locked in with the Mill Road project, and as, you know, you're aware, we did get two grants for the Mill Road project, one for the surface and then one for the water main. So fiscal '17 was pretty much already locked into the Mill Road project and the associated streets around there. We did add the 275 feet of sunset, as that didn't seem to be too impactful to the numbers. But all the numbers then going out for fiscal '18, fiscal '19, and then on the next page in '20 and '21 were based on the new Hancock study. And we use their estimated cost projections for those to come up with the numbers on page 14.
Start with Alderman Messina.
Where's Murray? Probably the biggest project we got? Is that 2020?
No. This year.
2017.
Murray's like three pages later. It's its own project sheet.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Same thing here. Got nine million, over $9 million of resurfacing. And I understand the budget's going to be fiscal year 17, but we always plan ahead so we're not scrambling at the last minute. Here, we have over $9 million worth of work. Somewhere in here, we're going to have to scale something back, whether it's 500,000 to a million dollars, and slow it down. Again, I understand the budgets for fiscal year 17, but if we're just going to do that and we're going to close our eyes to the future, then we're going to have red, so we need to make some of those decisions this evening would be nice. Or some type of concept, because then it goes to the budget. But if we're going to adjust to red for the future, we need to give some direction to staff. We can't have every project unless you, we want the red, then, then, again, take a million dollars out of the general fund, that'll start helping your issue, but... But that's usually not our goal because the general fund's going to be needed for other things as we discussed last night.
I'm going to let Alderman E. Wesley and Mr. Woods ask, Alderman Woods asked, answer their questions before we respond to the mayor. Alderman E. Wesley?
My question is, and I agree, and I thought Mary Jane was regrinding, resurfaced when we did Prospect. Yes, because we had a problem with they put the wrong, the asphalt was had to regrind and take it back up because it was faulty asphalt they put down. Someone can you answer that? Our engineer told them to hang out the asphalt. Or maybe George, maybe Mary, I'm confused. Mary Jane and George was done because they came down Mill Road to Mary, uh, Mary Jane, up to George to regrind the surface. I believe it was done and they had removed all the asphalt, again, because the asphalt was falling apart from the stone.
Do we have, do we have anyone from staff that could answer that question?
Go back to BMW and see what happens.
There was some lockdown.
No.
About four years ago was Prospect.
Yeah, but you're trying to tell me, you're trying to tell me Mary Jane is done within four years?
Well, let's see if we get the question answered. So hold on one second.
Yeah, to your specific question, I don't recall that. I remember the Prospect project, I just don't recall that, that portion of it. However, looking at the scoring sheet from Hancock...
Maybe Greg got the answer. Because I swear we didn't know.
Potter.
I do remember Potter had to be redone because it was, yeah, it was like it was topped up as a part of that problem.
All I ask is recheck the BMW and ask them.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I, I said, the only thing we can, at this time go off of is the score sheet from Hancock had Mary Jane at a forty-eight, which is why it's in there. So had Mill at a forty-seven, Mary Jane at forty-eight, and, yeah, so those are the two that are, oh, and Victoria at a forty-six. So those are the three, you know, the north, south, and the two eastwards. We can look into it for you certainly, but right now that's, you know, all I can go off of.
If we could let Alderman Woods ask his question, then we'll get back to the mayor.
I don't know if it's a question as much as rebuttal. I was going to say to the point of trying to change this whole document this evening, again, this is for two thousand and seventeen and we can, we can see where we're traveling and we know the red's coming up. Every one of these things we, we bring up and vote on another two, three times before we ever expend a dollar. And, and obviously, we're all going to be watching and, and watching the revenue come in and I'm watching the revenue go out to, to keep this adjusted properly, you know. This is following what we've put together in prior years and, and we all knew that we were heading to this point, especially giving, spending the extra two and a half million dollars that we didn't see coming on that intersection and some other things. So we just have to positively look at these projects as going forward and look at the, the dollars we're spending. And I think most of the people up here are doing that, but an effort to keep this moving forward, if we try to start dissecting this and arguing over whose road project's going to go in, we're going to be sitting here for three nights and then we're going to do the arguments over and over again anyway. So that's just my, I don't think we need to get too upset or...
I, I would agree with Alderman Woods unless the mayor still has a big issue with this. Go ahead, Mayor.
I don't have a big issue. It's very simple. We could direct staff, listen, cut, cut out five hundred, seven hundred thousand. I like to see the numbers all in blank. It's not that, I understand what projects are being done, but staff can come up with some kind of solution, cut something out. That's very simple. I don't think it's going to be that difficult to cut out. Because if you go out, I mean, if really go out to the end, what was it? They were only short, by two thousand and twenty-one, they were short three hundred thousand. Providing, and some projects may come in under budget, but I personally like to see a book all in black and I like to see less of the red. That's just my opinion.
Mr. Wilson, any thoughts?
Well, I, I mean, certainly, over the years, as the CIP process has gone, like I said, from the first year when we didn't have enough projects to now we have clearly too many projects, it, it's shifted. There's been a paradigm shift throughout the years. The first few years, the heavy, the heavy numbers were all in resurfacing. And then, you know, then we, for a few years in the, have gone heavy on reconstructions. And now the heavy money is going into stormwater management. So over the years, the process and the, kind of the bedrock of the plan has changed a few times over the years. And so as we go through the process tonight, we'll hear the comments for what, you know, is, I hate to use this phrase, but, you know, what the more value propositions in here are, what the council really wants to see done and what they're not as enthused with. And then we'll begin to build next year's model on that. So while certainly, I, I don't like, you know, seven out of the ten numbers being read in there. It's also, you know, a bellwether of the fact that the council has been very aggressive and wants to continue to be so, and that it's our job to fit, to do the best that we can to fit all that in there with the guidance from, you know, the eight or nine of you. So certainly, you know, absent, you know, taking money from someplace else, we can't do all of these projects as currently constructed. So, you know, it's our job to listen to you guys and see where we can cut, see what we need to cut and, you know, do the best we can every year. And as we're going through this next year, you know, we might have to come to you and say, hey, you know, we tried our best and what don't you want to do next year? You know, because there's going to be a critical mass point where there's going to have to be a choice between what you want to do and what you need to do.
I would agree, and I think that goes along with what Alderman Woods has said. I would say personally, I would think to move on, do I have any consensus on that? Should we?
Just want to get a confirmation on reserves, based on how you constructed it. Is it nine months reserves as this sits?
Brad, go ahead.
Sure, so the funding source for the capital improvement program is by and large completely separate from that nine month number that gets talked about quite a bit. There, there can be some interplay between the two of them.
Right.
With the way that it's been constructed, pretty historic, there was one year we, we did cross over, but, but historically speaking, the, the revenues for this have been a complete carve out and not related to the general operating fund of the city.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah, I was referring to that one year. So I just want to make sure that that's not happening again.
No.
As constructed, currently constructed, it is not.
Great. Just want to make sure. Thank you.
Alderman E. Wesley and then I think...
I don't have a question.
Okay. Do we have consensus to move forward?
You?
Okay, let's move ahead.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Murmas?
Just real quick, some good news on, on budgeting. We remember talking about the FAU routes and how we had applied. There was nine roads. We're really at the final hurdle where we're basically waiting for the paperwork, I believe, at this point, as it's cleared basically every hurdle except the final signature. So I would anticipate we're going to get that relatively soon. And out of the nine, we believe that we have been awarded six. So that'll help in the out years. I know there's some streets that are in disrepair that we have in the out years that we'll be able to use grant money for now, which we weren't, we wouldn't be able to before. So we've got six streets hopefully added to, to grant money to help pay for. So that's really good news. It's cleared every hurdle. I'm waiting for a signature.
Thank you for that. Mr. Mayor, you have a question?
Once we clear the hurdle, then we go, we submit the projects and it gets scored. And if there's other projects that are better than ours, we won't get the grant money. We could get the grant money if our project scores better than somebody else's. We're in competition with other communities.
But before, we were never, never even able to...
We weren't even in the game before. And, and real quick, if I may...
Go ahead.
When I mentioned the general fund, I said, if the council wanted to move a million dollars out of the general fund, this document does not move anything.
Correct.
If you're not taking out any projects, I just threw everything out there.
I, I would say let's continue. Again, going back to my first comment earlier today, last year's document showed us three million, two hundred thousand roughly to the positive at the end of two thousand and twenty. Now it shows us one million, a hundred thousand into the negative. So this is a changing document and since we're only approving two thousand and seventeen, I, I don't think it's, makes sense for our staff to start going out to two, three years and taking projects out at times. So let's continue. Mr. Mayor?
I understand. We're approving the budget for two thousand, but we're also planning for the future. So it's just something to consider. That's what I'm saying. I'm not going to close my eyes and say, well, I'm hoping that all the projects come in and then it's going to turn to the black. We may have to make some decisions and I don't have a problem making them right now.
Okay, let's continue.
So on page seventeen of the hard copy, the Wooddale and Irving Park Safety Improvement Program, project that I think we're all probably more familiar with than we want to be at this point. You may recall that the bids did come in higher than expected and there was some exposure to the city. So based on the project timing and what some of those costs were, we split this over the next two fiscal years, a million for fiscal seventeen and six hundred thousand for fiscal eighteen.
Go. Why are the design at one, a hundred and eighty-five for two thousand and sixteen? And then two thousand and seventeen, we got to come up with a million dollars. Okay, and then the following years, we got to come out with two thousand and eighteen. But I thought we... Two thousand and eighteen, the project should be done by then.
Mr. Wilson?
That's still calendar year seventeen. Yes, yeah, fiscal eighteen, calendar seventeen, and, and some of the, the costs were some things such as, you know, landscaping or other things like that that they're, even if the project finishes this time next year, then I'm going to be able to do landscaping and some other things like that. So the presupposition is that it will, some of those costs that were city specific outside of the roadway project would, would roll into the following year.
But keep in mind, planning, financing underneath there is a schedule project grant, a thousand, a million, it ain't a grant because we came out with that. We came shortfall, so that ain't part of the grant money. So let's get that straight. We had put out two million dollars, right?
We'll fix that. Yeah, we'll fix that.
So that's wrong, not about it.
It is. That's correct. We'll move it up two lines.
We'll have to fix that. No further questions? Well, let's continue.
Two thousand and seventeen, it's being changed to two million?
No, it's just an error in the south. We'll just move it up from the grant line, just move it up two lines on the, the bottom.
Okay, let's continue.
Sure, the next one, so Alderman Messina asked a few minutes ago is the Murray Drive roadway reconstruction program. I know there's been some discussion about the number in here. This was roughly the estimate from Hancock. They rated, I believe, a seventeen, which is a failed roadway. So they're assuming that there's some pretty significant base work that needs to be done on this. Yeah, I guess time will tell when they actually get into the engineering what this number's going to come back at, but...
I did have one question on this. Does this include sidewalk repair or no? Okay. Alderman Messina?
I know we had had concern about the water main. What was the final consensus on that?
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, the final consensus through the meeting we had a number of months ago on the strategic planning was that there was no indication that the main was failing, so not to do anything with it at this time.
Good, thanks.
Mayor?
Brad, I understand that, you know, the eight hundred thousand numbers for possibly needing the base may not be good or whatnot, but I'm, I asked you already, construction supervision, if they're just going to grind and resurface and have maybe three patches throughout the whole thing, it's going to take them two weeks to do the job, seventy five thousand. It just sounds pretty high to me.
Mr. Wilson, any comment?
Yeah, sure, Alderman Woods said the same thing, but it's, you know, typically the design and, oh, sorry. You said Alderman Woods.
Alderman Woods?
It's a percentage.
Right, well, it's certainly a valid question, but this was kind of my point of, we, we can start tearing this thing apart and arguing these things. These are the things I'm talking about that we're going to look at as we're going through this and voting on them to get to where you're saying to get to. All I'm saying is, we really don't need to debate every line item this evening because we're going to do it a couple of times before we ever spend the money. And that seventy-five might wind up twenty-five, or you could ask the question, why do I need to watch another guy grind the road? Let's get rid of the whole seventy-five. And it's pretty basic to go down the street and grind the road. We can have the public works guy, we got a couple of them, go out, take a picture, look at it, did they mill two inches off the street and did they put two lifts on the street?
Let's continue.
Next one is the Edgewood Sidewalk, project had been unfunded for a number of years and last year was pulled into the funded section. As you recall, there was a number of surveys sent out and at the end of it, going through with the engineering came back that the total project would be, the construction would be around six hundred thousand dollars. So the expectation with these numbers in fiscal sixteen is that they would begin the construction this year and then finish the construction once we get into fiscal seventeen after May first. So that's why there is a split in the numbers there, but it does get to the six hundred thousand for the construction costs that Robinson had estimated.
Yep, let's continue.
I had a question.
Alderman Messina?
How many homes were, were affected by this or impacted, positively impacted by it?
Anyone could please answer that?
Eighty? Okay, great.
Eighty, it's a long stretch.
Yep.
Any more questions, Alderman Messina? One thing on this is, I mean, this is something we had promised the residents and we've talked about this for a long time, so I think we're kind of got to stick with this project. Continue.
This is the Eldon O'Hare project. As you recall and probably know, you know, we've been working with H.R. Green for a number of years, working with the tollway plans, you know, being an outreach for us, et cetera. And so this is just a continuation of that program. The numbers do switch from design outreach to construction in the last year. Once the tollway is expected to be completed through the city, there might be some things that would be completely on the city's dime after that roadwork is done by the, by IDOT and tollway authority.
I'll just speed this up a little bit. Any questions on this? On the pages, if, if there's not going to be any questions, we'll just move on. The next page would be the Ash Street Crossing Safety Improvements. Do we have any questions on that one? Alderman E. Wesley?
Why are we even putting out any money? I thought that was all funded at a, a grant and Metro was picking up a big portion of that. So why is there any money earmarked for that?
Mr. Murmas?
I wish we had grant money for the whole thing, but there was some shortage and some things the grant didn't cover, I think, actually.
Yeah, what it wouldn't cover is the supplemental safety measures.
I got it.
It'll be a short, median, right at the railroad.
Yep. Okay, we can move on.
So that actually was the end of the transportation section. Now we're moving into the non-transportation section. Again, same format, high level summary of the different categories and then just a recap of the projects within each year with their page number and costs. So the first one in here is the IT.
Any questions on this one? Alderman E. Wesley?
The, this is for the cameras for the police department. By the way, I understand to monitor, what...
to monitor, what, where are these going for sixty-nine thousand?
Sixty-nine thousand?
You're on the wrong page. Oh, I got it. No, no, no. Have us look at some.
I'm not on the wrong page.
No, no, no.
Could the chief answer that?
Yeah, that sixty-nine thousand is for this current fiscal year. Part of that was the camera project, but I think there was other IT strategic plan stuff in there.
But what about the seventeen thousand?
Next here.
The seventeen thousand, what we're looking to do is add some monitors throughout the station. I think that number is probably high and I think it was estimated on the very high side. But with not having a twenty-four hour dispatch now, we want to be able to have, like in the lunchroom, in the patrol office, in the sergeant's office, and maybe the admin wing, have the cameras that monitor the lockup and outside the station here. Just up on those cameras kind of simulcast throughout the station. So as someone's in the station working, they can see if there's, number one, someone coming to the door. But if we have a prisoner down in lockup, it's a lot easier to monitor. We do some of that on our computer screens now, but if you're in the middle of doing something else, you're not always doing that. That would be up for everyone to see as the day goes on.
So is that, does the cameras are not counting the screens?
Go ahead, chief.
Actually, I'm going to defer to Nick, but it's, there's not new cameras included in this.
Mr. Case?
Thank you. There are no cameras in this. What it is, is it's essentially monitoring screens around the station so that the PD can monitor who's in lockup and all the different cameras around the station. The cameras already have been installed as part of the camera upgrade project that happened this year. This is just in addition to that with extra monitoring capabilities for them.
Don't we have all the monitors in the radio room that we dismantled that we could use?
Those are still active in there. Those still connect to the server and they're still active. But I think what the chief was looking for was additional monitors in all different areas of the police department so that they can, depending on where staff is at what time, they can continue to monitor.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah, I guess I'm confused. So I hear what Alderman Wesley is saying, right? So we have a room and then the trend for most technologies, go mobile, right? Which we have so they can get it from their computer. But then we want to reverse and we want to bring it back in-house and we want to have it on a desktop version when they can already get it mobile wherever they're at?
Couldn't the chief or Mr. Case answer that?
I'll touch real quick on it. Like, at some of our desks, we have two monitors right now.
Right.
And when I'm in my, at my desk, I'll frequently pull up the cameras at the beginning of the day and throw them on one monitor. Sergeants, if they're in the station, they generally do that too, especially if we have someone in lockup. What we're looking to do is sometimes even with two monitors, you're using that for budget and the other one, you're not always looking at it. So what we're looking at is, as people are in the lunchroom, it's just a static monitor of what's going on in lockup. So it's a TV screen. It's a TV screen.
Can't we just get some more monitors? We need seventy thousand more and...
Seventeen thousand.
Seventeen thousand more. Can we just get more monitors and...
Part of the issue is, is that we need to replicate what's on those monitors and send it across the station. So there's a couple of different options I've looked into to do that.
It's the servers. It's not, I mean, it's all hidden in the same server, right?
Correct.
So I, yeah, I don't follow.
It's on the server, but you need, you need either another computer set at that location to then connect to it. And that's one of the options we looked at, maybe getting a little micro tower that's simply going to do that. Again, the costs are probably a little bit high. This would be the worst case scenario. But again, we're going to be, I mean, there are a couple of different locations you wanted them at, I believe. We're looking at a ten locations, give or take.
I can't see this being more than ten thousand, worst case scenario. I think this is, okay, yeah, it seems really high. So anyways, we don't need to debate it. I know we're going to, it's going to come up for council, but I hope you guys will refine the number before it comes back up here.
Alderman R. Wesley, had a question?
Greg, I understand the monitors. Isn't there a way of, since we have Addison doing our dispatching and doing our camera watching too, there's not a server that we could link into theirs with, that we could see and that would be a cost savings on that? I mean,
I think Mr. Case might have an answer for it.
Am I getting off the question here or...
No, you're right on. Actually, what happens is Addison does connect into our server. So we do have the server there. The issue is grabbing the video stream that's on that server and spreading it around the station to the different monitors, TVs, whatever device we decide to put up there. Now, if we are going to put TVs up there, in order to see, there's something to keep in mind is, we're probably going to go somewhere with larger ones, depending forty-seven inch, because you've got, on certain screens, you've got nine or ten video images. So on a smaller monitor, that's over going to be tiny squares. So we need something that you can see what's happening in all of them. So screens are actually fairly large.
Someone return here. Greg, how many, I guess, how many hours are your guys staying here? I understand the lockup and everything, but I don't think we're going to have detectors and tenants and everything seeing at their desk and watching someone in lockup for two, three hours at their desk. I hope not.
No, and I think what it comes down to is, you know, if someone's in the lunchroom, they're not going to, you know, right now, there's no way for them to know if one of their officers gets in trouble downstairs. In the roll call room, we have an information board down there. In the sergeant's office, they're not going to be in there eight hours a day, but when they are in there, seeing what's going on in the administrative wing. I wouldn't mind having a screen over there that is going all the time, just so we see what's going on around the station. So I think on the estimate side, it's probably extremely high. But all I know is, in my perfect world, I'd like to have a minimum of four additional monitors throughout the station that show us what's going on, but up to eight or nine too, or somewhere in that range, depending on where we really say we want these monitors throughout the station.
How about if we give you six? You fine with that? Cut down that cost.
I would say...
Right. I mean, here we are. I mean, let's cut it down.
Would you guys be more comfortable with ten?
I would say, why don't we put it down to ten thousand? I think everybody here would be more comfortable with ten thousand. Do we have some consensus?
I think ten is very generous. I think you'll find a way. I think, you know, right? Server thing is not possible for the function, but the two-way radios are on them and they work when they're in lunch, right?
Yes.
So monitor's not, and so we're all, it's officer safety to me and that was very important, but we're just trying to proactively, it's not going to be, I mean, right? I mean, we're talking proactive safety. It's going to help, right? So it's going to, I mean, the two-way radio, by the time it hits the radio, it's too late. So these monitors are more of preventative.
They are, and it's not just for lockup, but, you know, it's the parking lot, it's the different entrances, you know, just the security of the building overall. I certainly think the number can be lower. I think the estimate was just provided on the super high side to make sure it was covered what was needed, so.
I think Mr. Murmas has something to say and...
Well, we can just make it nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine and you guys never have to worry about it again. I'll take care of it for you. Let's stop talking about it.
Sounds like a good answer. Next page. Yep, Mr. Wilson?
I know there was a little bit of hyperbole there at the end, but are we changing it to ten thousand or eighty-five hundred?
Nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine. Ten thousand. And I'll call Jeff on that call. Any questions on the streetlight installations? Okay, let's move on to the next page. Twenty-six, parking lot expansion. Any questions on this? We have several, myself. I think we're a little premature on this. I don't want to spend money on doing a parking lot expansion when we haven't even decided what we're doing with the bank. Next year, we may come back and say, well, we're going to expand the police parking lot into the bank's parking lot. And now we're going to have to, I mean, basically wasted this money. I think we really need to figure out where we're going with the bank first before we spend this money. Mr. Mayor, you had something?
I was just going to agree. I mean, we've been this way for how many years? Let's at least figure out what we're doing with the property before we start. Stretching out five or ten feet or whatever, just to turn them, it's twenty-four thousand, it's not going to, it's not going to turn the red to black. But I think we should just make sure because we might take fifty feet of that property and then do something else with the building and keep fifty feet for City Hall, whatever. I don't know. I mean, those are discussions for another day, not tonight.
Mr. E. Wesley, did you have something?
No, you guys have your...
Okay. I would say let's, I think the consensus is to take this out.
I don't know. I only want to...
I'm against.
Do I have anybody against that? Okay, we're going to take this out? Body cameras in car, body cameras and in-car cameras. Any questions? Alderman Messina?
Do these figures keep in consideration grant money? Because I know there's a lot of grants out there.
Chief?
This is our maximum cost hosting our own server. I was just at another meeting today and we were hopeful that the clerk might pick up some cloud storage and it's already sounding like that's not going to happen. So now we're working with the state's attorney's office. But this is for, this is an estimate of our cost, which I think we need to get the costs out there, even if, you know, there's some changes down the road in the next year. But this would include body cameras. It would include an upgrade to our in-car camera system, which is currently kind of low-def. This would be a high-def system that, you know, better in low lighting circumstances, and a twenty terabyte server and all the software to manage it. Kind of an upgrade of our current system. This would be a five-year cost. And if you look at the TASER system, that would be about a hundred and fifty thousand. So, you know, it's important that we start planning for this. Countywide, as DuPage chiefs were trying to plan for this and come up with hopefully a countywide format and discount pricing that might happen. So this is out of here, but I think by the end of this calendar, you're going to see some real, I think there's going to be some additional legislation in Springfield that tweaks a little bit of the FOIA laws and the redaction laws by this summer. It sounds like that's going to happen. And then, you know, by, by summer of 2016, I think you're going to really start getting a direction of where everyone's going with these. So by next year, you know, at least we're starting to plan for this. By next year at this time, I think we'll have real concrete numbers and possibly, hopefully cheaper solutions. I know some of the Google companies, you know, they have some cloud storage services out there that some are looking at too. So this is probably the high side, but at least we're starting to plan for it because I think it's the reality of the future, so.
Alderman Messina, so...
In light of what's happened, you know, out and around, those would have volume and, you know, audio rather?
That's correct. And we, we review our traffic stops on a regular basis right now and the success rate on our wireless audio sync is very high. There'll be an occasion that for a while it doesn't work and then it's on, but we check our officers all the time. The audio is working. If we, the officers are responsible for checking their audio to make sure it's working during their shift. If it's not, they have to write it up and then we'll get it fixed. Because, I mean, these things do go bad sometimes, but if you go on our server right now and pick pretty much any stop, you're going to have audio with those stops.
Okay. Since this is for 2018, I think we can move on. Police, page twenty-eight, police station HVAC controls. Any questions? Let's move on to page twenty-nine. Let's see, public works facility. Any questions on this? Mr. Mayor?
Real quick, probably, I think man left the room, but fifty thousand for a study to figure out how many trucks we can park in a building. I mean, we can't, we can't figure that out ourselves. Square footage, materials, whatnot, I mean.
That was kind of my comment on this too. I think we have plenty of public works director, two assistant public works director. I would hope that they could figure this out on their own without spending fifty thousand on somebody to do this. Mr. Murmas?
Again, it's in and out here and it's, you make it sound real simple, but unfortunately it's not. It's called a space needs analysis for an eventual public works building and that's more what we're looking at. So while they're smart, they're not that smart. So I would keep it in the out here.
I think they're pretty smart.
We can talk about it later.
Well, since it's in 2018, we will continue. Page thirty, facade improvement program. Any questions? Sounds like no questions. We will move on to page thirty-one. Clock tower. Couple questions I have here. Number one, are we getting the grant? Do we know if we're getting that grant yet? Mr. Murmas?
I'll stick with my same answer that we've been giving the past three months. Yes.
Okay. And if, for some reason, we don't get the grant, do we know the actual cost yet or we're still on at that point?
Well, we're not going to know the actual cost until we bid out the project. We thought the cost was going to be one thing on the safety improvement project and we learned it was not. So when we bid it out, then you'll get your cost.
So the design for thirty-five thousand dollars is for Euler still?
Mr. Murmas?
No, that's moving into H.R. Green to finish, to finish off everything. Euler, I think, has their hundred percent plans pretty much done this month sometime, hopefully.
Any day?
They've been a little slow, but they're approaching a hundred percent.
We've been waiting and went, is someone staying on them to move them along?
Mr. Cage?
Takes time. It's been months.
Absolutely. The deadline that was given is tomorrow. So if I don't get the plans, I will be in contact with you tomorrow.
And what happens when we don't get the plans if they don't?
We'll get, we'll get the plan.
Execution.
Okay.
Okay. I guess we, unless there's any objections, could we continue? Page thirty-two, new upgrades, citywide ERP system. Any questions on this? One, one question I do have on this one is, last year, the CIP, we only had three hundred thousand dollars. Now we're at six hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. So just kind of wondering why it's doubled.
Brian, you need Nick?
Nick? Nick, wondering.
Mr. Case will probably be the best person to answer these questions.
I'd say, yeah. Just wondering if some of the questions, I don't know, almost if we could hear the questions that way, we can just go. Because I think there might be some overlap in the questioning, so.
Let's, Mr. Mayor, your question?
Yeah. Anytime I hear we're changing the software, I cringe, especially after the one where I work and we change the software and then a year later, they added and they're still adding. And I had a little conversation with Mr. Case and Mr. Wilson, you were there. I'm sure by the time we get done with this, it's going to be a million dollars and not six hundred and twenty-five thousand. By the time we may, trying to integrate, it might be a great financial software, but, and I agree, it should, if we could connect Public Works, Building Department, everybody, it would make life easier. I just, I get a little nervous when I hear. But if you guys feel confident and there's not going to be any glitches and Mr. York's not going to have any problem communicating with finance, well, I can see that we're good. I'm sure it's going to work smooth.
Mr. E. Wesley and then we'll have Mr. Case.
Here's, here's my concern. We have debated about this several years now at the city council about software because we got the finance department using a different software. We got, you know what, we need to put all our software in one network and quit piecemealing it. They got their separate software, then this one's got their separate software. Let's, let's do this the right way now because the point is, I don't, I agree with you. I think it's going to be higher, no doubt about it, but let's put in the right software, not piecemeal this. You know, he can't, sometime can't use some of his software because it doesn't work. Building Department should be able keying the computer in finance and say, well, wait a minute, they haven't paid this, payment, you know. We need to be on the same page because every town that I've gone to, everyone's computer software is all connected. It just seems like for the past several years that we have sat up here, Nick's using a different software, Jeff's using, put it all on the one network, guys and work it together. If it costs that kind of money, at least we'll be on the same page here. I mean, we go in there and this one crashed because, you know, let's, let's, but you know what? That's a gamble you got to take on any network. The point is, you need to get under the same network. You got big Tiff district coming up or not Tiff district, redevelopment downtown area and Building Department's going to be going, God, that software don't work. I can't tap into the finance. Let's get on the same page. If it costs a hundred thousand dollars, then do it.
Before we have Mr. Case answer, I'll have one additional question for Mr. Case is, if we're going to spend a million dollars on this, how much money are we going to save with this? And I'll go to Alderman Messina.
That was my question, but... That was my question, but you talked about a paradigm shift, you heard it, right? Okay, so you're, you're agreeing, right? You're saying that, so you're standing up here and agreeing that we need to be on the same network, cause we're talking at them like they made that decision. They didn't make that decision. The council made the decision way back when, so.
Wrong, wrong.
Okay, well, I'd like to find out who made the decision, cause only, ultimately we did. So if we're standing up here and agreeing, it's a major overhaul and, and there's gonna be some bumps and you're gonna yell at them, I guarantee you, because it's not gonna go smoothly, that's just the way it is. So just, if we keep it, if we're gonna do this, keep in mind that it's not gonna, very rarely is it gonna be smooth and we just better just set expectations up front, cause it's, it's gonna be a bumpy road and there's gonna be some stuff we didn't expect, just.
Let's have Alderman Woods make his comment, the, the mayor, and then we're gonna have Mr. Case give his comments.
I was gonna echo some of the stuff that Alderman Messina already said, I mean, I've been involved in a couple big implementations and I can almost guarantee you, there will be glitches.
Right.
But again, that's why we're doing it, we will get through it, we will fix those. The current system has glitches all the time, every day, to get something that works forty percent of what it should be doing. So, I mean, we need to move forward, it is scary, there are gonna be issues and we're probably gonna spend a little more money, hopefully, but at, at the end of the day, it's gonna get us where we want. We're spending all the money on GIS, we can't integrate that. We're spending money on studies to, for service call tracking and implementing that system, that can't be used. We've got SCADA, we can't plug that in, we can't access the data. So we're creating data, we, we don't have a place to access it, house it and massage it and learn from it and then gain the savings. That's the next step.
Mr. Case, we'll listen to your comment, or Mr. Murmas? I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor has one more comment.
Very simple, Alderman Messina spoke about we're on Springbrook, correct? Is that what we're gonna replace? That came on, I think, I wa, I don't even think I was on the council yet when that started, just starting to get implemented. And unfortunately, some other modules should have been purchased, but were never purchased, is that correct, Brad?
Mr. Wilson?
Uh, yeah, to that direct point, uh, the process to acquire Springbrook was started in oh-five or oh-six. Yeah, it started in oh-five or oh-six.
Right.
The implementation of it was in late oh-seven, was when it was actually implemented within the city. And yeah, there were a number of modules that weren't purchased and, you know, I, not, you know, I don't wanna be on camera, you know, attacking them, but they weren't purchased because they didn't work. They, they weren't good modules. And, and to your point, replacing Springbrook, yes, but we're probably also replacing, I'm sure I'm gonna miss a couple, but you know, Bob's Code, maybe the public works software, the track, there's probably four, five, six, oh, maybe Nick, even though seven or eight different softwares we're gonna replace. So Alderman Jacobs' question about how much is it gonna save? You know, trying to put a, an economic monetization on that is pretty tough, but from a staff standpoint, an integration standpoint, I mean, I don't know that you, you can't put a number on that where you go to the city source app, you know, on your phone, you know, submit a, a service call, it just, it goes into the software, then the building department goes and they go, oh, they had a down tree there yesterday, maybe that's why they're calling about a code enforcement issue. Right now, there's no way that would happen. So, so to try and monetize it, I, I don't know how you would specifically monetize that. I mean, you can obviously come up with maintenance agreements and continuing service costs, but, but the integration of it, I think, would probably, uh, you know, that's what everybody's been talking about for years, so. And then, I don't know, pass it off to Nick, you're from.
Alderman Messina, would you like to add something?
I just, data cycles, right? I mean, everybody's talking different things and this is gonna put them together, so ultimately it's good to deliver virus services over the residents. The end.
Mr. Case, would you like to give your comments?
Thank you. Uh, you're all correct, it is going to be a long and painful process. ERP software is, is software that is utilized by every department within the organization. It's going to take a long time. And the longest time of that is, is gonna appear like nothing is getting done, because we're gonna be planning. We're gonna be planning reports, planning how the flow of work is going to happen through the software. There's gonna be planning on top of planning on top of planning before we even start thinking about implementation, because when you fail to plan, the ERP will fail, it's a guarantee. And then we will be spending more money than we want to spend. So the planning is gonna be the most important. In terms of replacing modules, some different, like obviously Springbrook will be gone, Bob's Code will be gone, a couple other different software options will be gone. Some will integrate with the ERP so that data can be handed back and forth, depending on the capabilities that the ERP offers to replace that software or not. So you're kinda correct in that too, whereas we are going to wind up saving money, it's hard to judge now. The only other thing I'd say is, a good thing to keep in mind is this year, we're asking for twenty, twenty-five thousand, because it's going to be a planning phase. In case we need to make a purchase for the ERP, we have that there, but right now it's more so discovering the needs, discovering vendors that are gonna work with it, discovering, you know, what workflows we want, different things like that, and kinda planning the processes around it before we even get to those purchasing and decision steps yet. Wanna see what it'll fit, so you very well likely see the numbers change in the future and it may not be six hundred thousand, it may be two hundred thousand, it may be seven hundred thousand, but we'll have a significantly better and more accurate idea in the coming years.
I'll start down here, Alderman Messina.
Twenty-five thousand then, purchase software to figure out if this makes sense, or is twenty-five thousand for consulting?
It will be, it's, it's kind of a vague answer, but it, it's for what we may or may not need it for. If we need to do a server upgrade, really, we don't know where we're at and what we're gonna need. Say vendor A says, hey, before we get launching into this, you're gonna need X, Y, and Z and I have to buy a server, it may go towards that. It's, that, it's kinda where, where we're at. It, it's gonna be for what we may or may not need it for. It may not get spent at all, it may all get spent, but it will, you know.
Okay, we'll move to the mayor?
Very simple, I'm all for connecting the entire city. I just wanna make it known that if we think that this is gonna be the end, it's not, we're gonna have to expend more money and I don't wanna sit up here, oh, but you said, just, I wanna be upfront, this is gonna cost us probably more money and the implementation's gonna be brutal. And, and I don't wanna hear, oh, but you guys said you'd have it ready by the end of the year. That's not gonna happen. I just wanna make sure we're on the same page. This is gonna cost us more than we're probably looking at.
Okay. Alderman E. Wesley?
So, go back, twenty-five thousand dollars and then the following year, you get three hundred thousand. Is that to buy the equipment or, or what's that?
Yeah, in the, in the timeline, we assume that this upcoming fiscal year will be, again, a lot of planning and more of discovery, where we're gonna discover different vendors that are gonna work to fit our needs, what software we want, and we'll get a better idea of where we're headed. We hope that by the end of this fiscal year and entering next fiscal year, we'll be able to begin the purchase process. So we kinda wanted to have a placeholder for what we think we may or may not need. And that's really all that is, that number, I can guarantee, is going to change by the end of this upcoming fiscal year.
It might not be a number.
Correct. It's more of a placeholder, I didn't wanna debate every line item.
I know it's gonna come up later and I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure the council's on board. We had an internet consulting together.
Okay, well, I think everybody's on board, so we're gonna go to O'Hare Noise, any questions? We'll move to page thirty-four. Painting of decorative streetlights, I do have a couple questions on this. How old are these streetlights?
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to get actual data, but if I recall correctly, those streetlights were put in over the course of how many years? The, the decorative ones along Wooddale Road, probably five, six, seven years, I mean, so.
The last ones were in fi, about five years ago and before that, I think they were, the project was going for like five or six years before that.
The old ones could be twelve years old.
They could be, right. That was one to mind me, I, I thought, for some reason, I thought they were much newer and I was like, this, okay. Any more questions here? Okay, we're gonna move on to economic development, any questions? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the comprehensive plan or whatnot, and again, I'm going out, I'm sorry, Alderman Woods, but I, I like to look at the future and I like to plan. The TIF study, right away for downtown Irving Park, I'm a, I'd rather be a little more cautious and push that out a few years, see how the first one's going, not to mention, we need to get the comprehensive plan done and then the same thing with the Buxton, just wait till the, the comprehensive plan is done, that's all, I'm just, I wanna be cautious.
Mr. Murmas?
Yeah, like the mayor said, I mean, obviously, the most important one is obviously in seventeen, the comp plan, we need to get that done, kinda work the other things off the comp plan from a staff perspective. There's this sheet and there's a couple other sheets, kinda economic development related with some land act talk, a lot of these items, if not all the items, we've discussed previously and most recently at strategic planning. And we just wanted to make sure we included them all in here, so again, we're aware of them. What order they go in could be debated for another time, but we do know that we need to do the comp plan next year. And we listed all the other items that we had talked about as priority, cause we all wanna get them done.
I think my only question here would be, could Buxton help us with the comprehensive plan or will they not? Okay. Alderman R. Wesley?
So, hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Are we on page thirty-six yet?
We're on page thirty-five.
Let's go to thirty-six.
Think we're ready to move on to thirty-six and I think we have a question, Alderman R. Wesley?
Well, go ahead, let him go first.
Mr. Murmas?
Just, just a little background on, on what this is. This is actually talks from previous strategic plans about the Potter Street problem and the appearance problem coming into town from the east heading west, is that is kinda like a, a boundary, a gateway into the community. So we did have some other ideas for Potter Street in the past that hadn't worked out. So this was the most recent idea, kinda, kinda kill a couple birds with one stone, solve the, the parking and the right-of-way issue, solve kinda the clutter issue and at the same time, beautify the area by adding some landscaping. And the other component of it is, there's some really ugly transformers right on that gateway, right in the middle of Irving Park Road.
So how much for the transformer?
Fifty-five thousand was the combat estimate. So that was the other component and we just lumped it into the eastern gateway project.
So you got a hundred thousand dollars just in landscape?
That's just an estimate.
Hang on, but there'll be some nice trees.
Again, this is an estimate right now?
It's very, very, very rough estimate and, so I know you guys, everyone wants to jump to conclusions, but understand, we just spent ninety thousand, or excuse me, yeah, ninety thousand on the other side of Potter. So you come from one area, looks phenomenal, and then you move and then it's just this gap of like what it has, right? We won't talk about what we have, but we have the right-of-way issues that we, we have to reclaim. We're gonna be smart about it, I think we've talked about this, we need to reclaim that, we need to give residents peace of mind, I mean, we can't rezone that. That, that's a, something on my wish list thirty years from now, but we need to do something cause that is the one area that's just missing and it's bad, it's really bad.
I mean, we have parking issues there, we, we got, you know, which the police have already looked into, that cannot be fixed, the fire department's, I mean, code enforcement has looked into this, the building department has, Mr. Mayor?
All right, we say a hundred thousand, it's not just landscaping, cause I had the same questions. I called and basically, it involves taking, taking back the parkway that's actually ours and putting in curbs and things like that. And that's where the expense was, I don't know where they got the estimates or how they got the estimates. It seemed a little high for me, even just for some curb work and taking over the parkways and, and getting some of those businesses to have a actual parking lot, so they're not parking cars, I mean, some nights the cars, the last car's sticking, but the third half of the car is sticking into the street.
So.
Mr. R. Wesley?
Are you saying it, you saying parking lot, taking back the parking lot?
No, no, well, the parkway, they're all, they're all the way to the street.
So are we gonna make this parkway part of a parking lot for them? On city property?
No, we're taking back the parkway.
They're using, they're using it as a parking lot right now.
They're using it as a parking lot, we're taking that back. Uh, Mr. Murmas?
If you can, the, um, if you can envision the, the remote metro parking lot area with the mulch and the native grasses and the, the curb line over there, that's kinda the concept, that we would have a barrier there, kinda beautify.
What if they had to our flower boxes that we were gonna put there as something to separate?
You can make flower boxes as part of this, but.
We talked about that months ago, with John Forrest and everything.
Anything could be part of this, it's just.
No, about Potter Street.
John's working on it.
John's, yeah, okay. I mean, what happened to that subject?
Well, I, again, I, I think Mr. Murmas said, I mean, we're gonna talk about what we could do, I mean, it is reclaiming our easements and doing some, something there to beautify it, get rid, take care of that parking sick problems that we have, that we've looked into, we've exhausted it through the police, we've exhausted through the fire department, we've exhausted the building department.
Then let's do it sooner than later, because we talked about the flower boxes long, 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 long time ago.
Right.
I'm gonna be retiring soon.
Okay, Mr. E. Wesley?
Really? Let me back up here, maybe I'm confused where this is at. So this is by Ready Electric, right?
Transformers, right?
Transformers over there.
So removing those. So that's fifty-five thousand. And where are you putting the curbs and everything else?
Mr. Murmas, could you please?
So, so if you can picture this, you know, the, the Potter Street rain garden that we just did?
So in front of those businesses?
Correct.
Right, again, I have a problem with that. Okay? We spent numerous meetings, numerous dollars, numerous things, one another all the moves here, to discuss about planting trees, met with all those businesses, now women.
But you're, you're, I can save you a lot of time.
Let's, let's, let's have, Mr. Murmas, could you please?
That's exactly why we're doing this, because we take the partnership component out and we are one hundred percent in control of the project, hence why it will get done. The other talk was for behind the property, which was very burdensome, not only with Metro, but also the owners of the properties and we couldn't get buy-in from everybody. So this would take out that component and leave everything on us.
I didn't think we had a problem in front of those buildings. So you're telling me we have problems in front of this?
We have major problems in front of the buildings.
Or because a handful of residents complaining over there?
No, has nothing to do with residents, uh, major parking issues, I think police chief could attest to this, I think building could attest to this.
Fire code issues, yeah. Rodent issues.
So go there and start finding these people and, and close it out. I mean, it's that easy.
I'd just like to get home before midnight.
Alderman Messina?
In the sake of going home before midnight, we're, we're gonna contest this, can I just, can we offer to give direction to say, a hundred is too much, come up with something constructive, we have to reclaim our parkway? Can we give them a number, let's cut that in half and say fifty and say, this is what we can do? Give us some options, but I just think we need to just clean up that area. I don't know where the hundred thousand came up, it wasn't.
That's pretty high for a hundred thousand.
Well, let's see what they come up with.
I, I would say let's, personally, I would say let's just leave it in, we're gonna debate it again, when it hap, when we have the plans. R. Wesley?
We've been talking, Jeff, you know, we've been talking about this for two years probably, in front of the places too, about taking ownership of what is ours. I'd like to see this year, twenty sixteen, put in this year's budget, get the darn thing done. How many more years we gotta talk about it?
Thank you.
This, this, twenty seventeen.
That's the.
Could we get it this, I mean, this coming summer, get it done?
Okay, I think we have consensus here to move forward with this.
No, no, you forget him and him.
Mr. Murmas? With direction of looking at cheaper options?
And we're also. And we're also, there's two components. We're also interested in the commed component as well.
Correct.
Okay, now, the fifty-five was the price the commed gave.
Okay.
But as they get deeper in, it may go forty-five, it may go sixty-five. I don't know.
Okay. Well, I mean, we have a hundred fifty-five thousand budgeted, and, I mean, we could debate it once we get to the numbers. Alderman Woods?
That's what I was gonna say. I mean, I'm assuming staff is always looking for the better price. I mean, we competitively bid it, we, we look at all that. They're not gonna go out and spend it just because it's there. If you go through all the past budgets, there's numerous line items where we saved money on them, because staff was doing their job. So, like, again, we could bait it tonight and, you know, take fifty thousand dollars out, and then we're gonna be back here arguing it again, because we need fifteen thousand. That's all I'm saying. I'm, I'm looking to save money, too, but also time.
I thi, I think we have consensus to move forward with this. We're gonna go to the next topic. Page number forty. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Wilson?
Just real quick, the, the page that the manager alluded to, the economic development initiatives that have been discussed, that's here on page thirty-seven. So, you can see the top four, we just, by and large, discussed. The middle four are sitting in the unfunded section near the back. And the bottom two, as a little bit of a foreshadowing, are gonna be things that you're going to see in the budget document that comes out in the middle of next month. So, and those are all things that were discussed. So, just a point of reference, the manager mentioned it was in the book, so that, that's where it is, so.
Thank you. Page number forty, maintenance of reservoir tanks three, four, and five. Any questions? Alderman R. Wesley?
Is this North Plant?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, it's kind of, you know, interesting how things work. Just got a, a note passed to me from Mr. York, that he's requesting this project get moved back a couple of years due to the actual cost of this project coming in markedly higher than what we had previously been expecting it to come in, so.
Okay, so we're gonna save money this year. Perfect. Now, page, page forty-one, water facilities maintenance. Any questions?
Did we get another note from Mr. York on this one, too?
Mr. R. Wesley? We'll move on to page forty-two. South Treatment Plant Facility. Any questions on this?
South Treatment?
This is the South Treatment Plant Facility Maintenance, page forty-two. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, real quick, the fifty thousand is designed, that'll tell us what we need to do with our plant, right? Correct. It should, it should be telling us what, if anything, we need to do with that plant, or if, what it's gonna cost us to go to Addison, or push everything up to North Plant. Is that correct? Is that the three items that's in this fifty grand, or no?
Mr. Murmas?
The fifty grand would be for a feasibility study with options. There are multiple options. Addison, lift station, rehab, the plant, multiple options. So, we wanna get the study done. And maybe we don't have to do anything for five, six, seven years. We really don't know at this point. We really need to investigate what's going on over there. The plant was in a lot better shape. It had a lot less wear and tear than North Plant, even though it's about the same age. But it's used, it's, it's, it's less, less used than, than North Plant. So, we may be able to get by longer than we thought, but we definitely do need to do the feasibility study, so we can, we can plan. Because it will be a big financial hit eventually, and it will be inevitable, so.
Mayor has a follow-up?
Yeah, as, as a follow-up, I mean, we have five million dollars in the out years, again, and again, I'm looking out. Again, we might do a low-interest loan, again, state revolving funds, which is another loan. But again, if we, if we go that route, me personally, I'd like to push this project back as far as we can, but we need to do the study to see what we can do, because otherwise, I'm looking at another dollar increase in the water and sewer rates, which I'm not too excited about. We need to try and keep this operational without spending another five million. And do we really need to see that five million dollars in there right now?
Mr. Murmas, or Mr. Wilson?
I would say we could take that out, because there's so much unknown. We'll leave the fifty in, and then next year, we can probably have some better numbers. We just threw that in there as an estimate. If we're uncomfortable with it in there, it's no problem.
It just gets rid of some of the red.
Because that's a big unknown.
But I know we need to get the right numbers.
I think Mr. Wilson had a comment there.
Yeah, and I was just gonna make the comment that, uh, some time ago, Alderman, R. Wesley had asked about the red in the water fund. And I said, there were two main components driving those numbers red. This would be one of those two. So, certainly, if we take those out, we just wanted to, everybody to be aware that there is gonna be a fairly significant impact to this, to the south plant, whatever we decide to do, but we can certainly take that out until we have firmer numbers going forward.
Alderman E. Wesley?
I agree with you, Mayor, but you know what? We also gotta look at what might come down the pipe with EPA, too, to bring up the standard. So, I'm, I'm gonna say, I agree taking out now, but we might have to put that back in there if EPA is saying we have to do something. My question is fifty thousand dollars. It's under design. You ain't doing a design. You're doing a study.
Mr. Wilson, could you answer that question?
Yeah, I mean, we typically throw most, you know, engineering work under design. If you're more comfortable, we can certainly change that caption to study or engineering study.
We are not designing to build. We are doing a study. I just want people to know that.
Yeah, we, we can change the caption.
Alderman Messina?
All valid points, just no surprises, right? So, I'm glad to see the fifty in there. I get why we take this out, but we can hide it. I mean, if we don't wanna see red, but it's there, it's gonna happen, so we gotta plan. So, I'd rather keep it in there, just because it's there, it's gonna happen, you know?
Mr. Murmas?
The one thing, too, I don't want the council to, to worry that we're gonna study things that may not potentially happen. For example, the Addison, potential to, to strip this over to Addison. We've already reached out to Addison. They agreed that they'd be willing to talk about how that could happen. So, that is a, a real option that we would include in the study. So, I don't want you to think we're, we're gonna study Addison and we didn't ask Addison or anything like that.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
And as far as the numbers, I mean, if we're gonna do something to that plant, I'm sure we're gonna go to state revolving funds again. And the numbers would be actually, whatever the loan amount would be per year versus two and a half million dollars a year. Well, if you wanna pay cash, maybe you got a lot of money.
Uh, this, Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, just to go to what Alderman Messina said about, you know, not wanting it to disappear or whatever. If there's some level of comfort that we acknowledge that we have to do something, we could put this in the unfunded section and then, and then put a note about the IEPAL loan or something like that. That way, at least it's represented in the document, but it's not gonna mess with the pro forma cash flows at the front end of the document.
Okay, that's fair. That's fine.
Does anyone have a problem putting this into unfunded?
I'm good with that.
No, uh, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, as long as we keep it on the radar, you know, we're fooling ourselves if we take stuff off just because we don't wanna see a color. And I, and again, I'm with you. We're trying to do the same thing, but taking things out to, to make it black, we're only fooling ourselves. Those things are viable things.
It's really an unfunded project.
Exactly. We'll put this into unfunded and move on to page forty-three. North Treatment Plant Facility Maintenance. Any questions? There being none. Page forty-four, Treatment Plant slash Veterans Memorial. Any questions? Alderman E. Wesley?
Are we doing anything in next year on that thing at all? I mean, how, how are we gonna win it? I mean, we talked about, we, we had the guy design it. We, you know, we had him, but we shot him down. But then when we're looking at trying to do something, peace be with you.
Mr. Murmas?
Yes, uh, we drafted this following council's explicit direction to wait for the landscaping to take hold in the spring, see how it looked over a full season, and then act. So, that's the exact decision on how we modeled this, from what you told us to do.
Alderman Messina, do you have something to add? Okay, I think we're gonna move on. Page forty-five, Lift Station Rehabilitation Program. Any questions? Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, just a comment. This is another program. I mean, I know we need to redo these lift stations and maybe we're taking maybe a little too aggressive approach, but again, we'll hit them as we come for each budget. That's all.
Okay, we will move on. Page forty-six, Mill Road Water Main Replacement. Any questions? No questions. Uh, I'm sorry, Alderman E. Wesley?
I filed a grant, right? And then, uh...
Mr. Wilson?
And it, and also the I task portion, right?
Mr. Wilson?
Uh, there is a portion of it that is being funded through a grant, correct? Um, and part of, when you say the I task apart, I want a little clarification before I answer. I think I know what you're asking, but I just wanna make sure before I...
So, that's a project of a third portion of that street. So, my whole concern, so the whole project for that water main, it's seven current, twenty thousand estimated, right? Is that after the four thousand, for the grant out of it? That's what we owe, seven twenty? Or is that not mine?
Uh, I think Mr. Murmas wanted to comment on something here.
Our portion will be three eighty-five. Yeah, and I don't think that factored in the I task a portion yet, because we were waiting... Yeah, because that was just a street, yeah. For the water main.
Any more questions on this? Okay, we'll move on to page forty-seven, Replacement of Water Tower Number One. Uh, I think, uh...
The mayor wants to make the motion.
I, I would say, I would say this needs to push, be pushed into unfunded personally, but, uh, Mr. Mayor?
This project keeps going, seems to be going back every year. And again, either we're gonna paint it, I, I, listen, I understand if we build a new one, pressure improves, pump improvement. I don't know how many pumps we burnt out since I've been on the council, because it has dowered, but I'd like to just paint it and get it over with, and it's done for fifteen years, and and at that time, then it'll have to be replaced anyways. Or twenty years, I think I believe it is.
My thing would be to move it to unfunded, but what would the cost be to paint it? Do we know that? Did we get that?
It was about, back then, it was about four hundred thousand, four fifty. It was really about three fifty, but I'm, I'm just overestimating the number now because of, it's been about five years.
Is, is a water tower in the...
Mr. R. Wesley?
Is a water tower in the business district, so we could fund it under a facade program?
Doesn't score well at all.
It's not a corner lot.
I, I guess I want consensus. Do we wanna move this into unfunded, or do we wanna put five hundred thousand in there for painting? I, I get the consensus unfunded. Wait, Mr. Mayor?
I see Mr. York shaking his head, so I think they're gonna need some kind of direction. At some point, we just can't leave this thing unfunded, because this involves the water pressure throughout the city. If you don't have correct water pressure, somebody has a fire, they're not gonna, their house is not gonna be saved. So, this is not one that we wanna just keep pushing back.
Alderman Woods?
We inspect it every year.
Once again, I'm gonna go back to my original statement. Let's leave it in. It's gonna be highly debated over time. I'm not saying push it back. Leave it right where it's at. It's in the budget. We're gonna debate it when it comes up, right? I mean, like you said, it's something that we're gonna need. Do we need it today, tomorrow, or yesterday?
Why are we even going through this stuff? If we aren't making decisions, pull stuff out of this. I mean, why are we?
We, we did pull some stuff out.
We have pulled some stuff out, and we've asked some good questions.
We're already on page forty-seven, almost done.
Yeah, we're almost there. Do we wanna move this to unfunded, or do we wanna?
I, I, I think you leave it where it, where it's at.
Okay.
It's gonna get voted on, so just leave it.
Okay, leave it. Page forty-eight, Annexation Water Tap-on Program. Any questions?
Nope.
Go.
Move on. Page forty-nine, Inflow Infiltration Study, I N I. One of my questions, and from looking at the CIP last year, for two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty, it was three hundred fifteen thousand. Now, I see we're at one point eight million. I'm not sure where the extra one point five million came from, so.
No, no, I, I can answer that.
The mayor thinks he could answer the question, so we'll first...
Well, when you saw last year's CIP, we pulled a couple of years out, because we were basically like, I remember the numbers now. Let's say, one, two, and three were already awarded. One was about ninety percent completed. Two is about fifty percent completed, and three was about, you know, thirty percent completed. So, we took a break, took some out. That's why the number's gonna be lower than it is right now. Now, every year, it has something in there again. And my next question was gonna be, are the previous ones done? If they're not, I'm not too swift to give them another job if we're not finished with the first ones. Same thing.
Mr. York, could you answer some of these questions?
Yes, um, when we had our last review of tapes done in Areas Two and Three, we received a report. They, uh, we had a design contract about a month ago for RJN to design, to do some slip lining, some point repairs in Area Two. They also noted areas in Two and Three that needed to be done. It just happened to work out that it was another five years' worth of, of work that needed to be done in Areas Two and Area Three. That includes sewer line, manhole replace, or manhole repairs to clean up area, to finish Areas Two and Area Three. So, that's what we, we, we spread those out over the next five years to get those, one, one project done a year in each of those areas. And so, at the end of two thousand and twenty-one, we will have all of Areas One, Two, and Three will all be completed.
I think my question has been answered. Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, no other questions. We'll move on. Page fifty-one, these are all unfunded projects, correct, Brad?
Correct. From, from here to the end of the book, yes.
Did you wanna give any overview on this before we go to the pages? I guess, and this one, I guess, if anyone has any questions, Alderman Messina?
Uh, just can I get some background around the Irving Park land acquisition? Quick background?
Mr. Murmas?
This was, again, brought up as a strategic plan. This was to proactively purchase some maybe dilapidated properties or some vacant properties and consolidate for economic development.
So... Yeah, I just would love to see this at some point make its way somewhere, because as we know, that's the main artery and cord through town and...
Uh, Mr. Murmas?
Yeah, and, and going back to the strategy, obviously, we, we can't do everything at once. That's why we're gonna do the comp plan. And then maybe next year, this time, we're done with the comp plan. Comp plan says, hey, let's do this, this, this. Give us a little guide, and then we'll put that into funding.
Okay, uh, Mr. Mayor has a comment?
Very simple. The bank wasn't in our plans or in our bu, uh, budget, and, but we purchased the bank. So, I mean, if a property comes up, we'll have the discussion and council will make the decision. That's how the bank happened. It was not a funded project, but it just, that's why.
I do have a question on page fifty-eight, the community park at the Town Center. Again, I see five million dollars. I, I don't know exactly where that number came from. Did we ever have any specific plans to spend five million there, or? Mr. Murmas?
Uh, no, that was just, I think, a very ballpark figure based upon one of the Uller studies. We have had talks with the Park District. They have to do some rehab or some type of reconfiguration of the pool area. They wanna be an active partner with us with whatever happens down there, so maybe it's a joint project, whatever, whatever we do. And I think those talks will obviously start heating up as we conclude with the safety improvement project, move on to the next step. You know, what do we wanna do in that area as we kinda created the blank slate that we wanted? What would we wanna do next? And the Park District's willing to, to potentially partner with us in these discussions.
Okay, do we have any more questions? With that being said, like to make, do we have to make the motion to approve and take a roll call on this? Okay, so, uh, with the changes that have been? I'd like to make the motion. I'd like to make that motion.
Second, second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley? Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
That motion passes. Items to be considered at future meetings? Audit, audit report, January 28th, budget, February 25th. Alderman R. Wesley, would you like to add something?
Yes. Okay, Brad, when was the last time we did a early buyout?
Mr. Wilson?
I'd have to double-check. 04, 05 is sticking in my head. So 2004, 2005, that number is sticking in my head.
Is it possible that we could look at doing another one? There's different ways of doing it, through IMRF, through another program, and see where those numbers may come.
Mr. Wilson?
I mean, I think we could save a lot of money if we did an early buyout. For an example, if you have 10 employees at $75,000, you do an early buyout, you bring their salaries back down to 45,000 or 50,000, see where those numbers come in at. How soon, and how soon could we get this?
Mr. Murmas, could we put this onto the future agenda?
And how soon could we put these numbers together?
We'll get to those numbers tomorrow. I'm just kidding. No, we'll put it on future. I got to talk with Brad. I don't know how long it's going to take.
I would, yeah.
Alderman Messina?
I was going to say, the numbers would be good. I just think, especially on the back end, you know? I think we, as residents, keep hearing more and more about our property taxes and not at the local level, but the county level. So I think we could do our part. Let's see. See where it comes back. But can we do a total package, total comp package that looks, benefits and total cost?
No, no, no benefits.
Mr. Murmas?
Again, I'll talk with Finance Director Wilson. We do have CIP to wrap up, budget to wrap up. Try to squeeze it in as best we can, but it's not going to happen, you know, next week or anything, so.
I was hoping to, I was hoping to possibly have this discussion at budget time.
We'll talk and...
See where the numbers come in.
We'll let Mr. Murmas and Mr. Wilson talk. I'd like to thank everybody for their hard work on this. Staff, everybody, all the department heads that put a lot of time and effort into this. With that, I'd like to make the motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.